Mr. Mayor, we're ready to go.
Okay, in that case, we will go ahead and call to order the regular meeting of the Vallejo City Council for June 14, 2022. Would you please rise with me and give the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of our country?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. May we have the roll call, please?
Mayor McConnell.
Here.
Vice Mayor Verder Eliga.
Present.
Councilmembers Ariola.
Present.
Dewe.
Here.
Loretta Diaz.
Present.
Meesner. I'll note for the record, Councilmember Brown is absent.
Thank you. And may we have the report out of closed session, please, Ms. Allen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city council did meet this evening at 5:30 PM with regard to the following closed session item: Conference with Real Property Negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 549, 56.8. The property address is 1937 Broadway, Vallejo. The agency negotiators are the city manager, the assistant city manager, and myself, negotiating parties for the seller, Scott Foster, and under negotiations were price and terms of payment. The council did give direction to its negotiators, and there is no further action to report at this time.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to Item 5A, Presentations. Madam Clerk, would you call 5A, please?
Presentation of a proclamation declaring the week of June 19 as Juneteenth Week in the city of Vallejo.
Thank you very much. And for those who are receiving this proclamation, would you please join Councilmember Dewe at the side podium for that presentation?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'm honored to give this proclamation in Councilmember Brown's stead. He is unfortunately unable to be here this evening, but I'm very excited to present this proclamation this evening. Declaring the week of June 19, 2022, as Juneteenth Week in the city of Vallejo. Whereas, Juneteenth is the oldest known celebration commemorating freedom from slavery in the United States. And whereas, on June 19, 1865, more than two years after President Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation, word finally reached Galveston, Texas, that slaves were free. And whereas, on June 18, 2021, President Joe Biden proclaimed Juneteenth as the 12th federal holiday to be observed on June 19. And whereas, President Biden called upon Americans to recommit together to the work of equity, equality, and justice, and commit together to eradicate systemic racism that still undermines our founding ideals and collective prosperity. And whereas, Juneteenth is an observance celebrated with traditions handed down through many generations, including family gatherings and picnics, music, stories told by elders and local historians, speeches in recognition of prominent individuals who have made significant achievements and contributions to the community. And whereas, it is a time for reflection and rejoicing, a time for assessment, self-improvement, and for planning the future. And whereas, residents are encouraged to join together in celebration of freedom, family, and community by embodying a spirit of peace, respect, and brotherly love, and to honor and salute our city's rich cultural legacy and diversity. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I, Robert McConnell, Mayor of the city of Vallejo, and the Vallejo City Council declare the week of June 19, 2022, as Juneteenth Week in the city of Vallejo, and urge all residents to commit to rededicating ourselves to the ongoing work of guaranteeing liberty and equal rights to all Americans.
Good evening, everyone, to those present here in the chamber and to those who are watching at home. On behalf of the African-American Family Union Committee, we want to I want to thank the entire council for their support of this proclamation, importantly for their support last meeting a few weeks ago in supporting the renaming of the park, Martin Luther King Jr. Park, and just the ongoing support of cultural diversity, the importance of it in Vallejo, celebrating all of our different cultures here in the city. Our seats on the dais may change, but there has been a dedication to this kind of celebration and others in the city, and we're grateful for that. We want to invite all the citizens of Vallejo out to our event on this Saturday from 11 to 4 to celebrate Juneteenth. Thank you all for your support.
Thank you all very much, too. And Madam Clerk, we'll move on to our next item on the presentation calendar, 5B. Would you please call that item?
Presentation of a proclamation recognizing LGBTQ Pride Month, June 2022.
All right. And we will have Councilmember Meesner presenting that at the side podium, so those who are going to receive it, please join her.
That was a lovely proclamation for Juneteenth and tonight as well, recognizing the LGBTQ community. With what's going on in the world, it really warms my heart that we can do this tonight here in the city of Vallejo. So thank you. And with that, I will start with the proclamation. Proclamation recognizing lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer Pride Month, June 2022. Whereas, 52 years ago, in June 1969, a riot at a Manhattan gay bar, the Stonewall Inn, in retaliation to a police raid, precipitated the modern fight for lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, LGBTQ rights. And whereas, because of the acts of courage from those who demanded justice and from those who quietly pushed for progress, our nation has made great strides in recognizing what these brave individuals long knew to be true to their hearts, that love is love and that no person should be judged by anything but the content of their character. And whereas, the 2015 landmark Supreme Court decision was a historic victory for the LGBTQ Americans, guaranteeing marriage equality in all 50 states, ensuring dignity for same-sex couples and therefore all couples, and for every partnership that was not previously recognized under law, and for every American who was denied their basic civil rights, this monumental ruling instilled newfound hope, affirming the belief that we are all freer when we are all treated as equals. And whereas, despite this extraordinary progress, LGBTQ Americans still face discrimination simply for being who they are, and there remains much work to do to extend the promise of our country to every American. And whereas, in memory of the 49 victims of the 2016 Pulse nightclub massacre in Orlando, transgender individuals murdered for who they are and a history of violence against our community, it is ever more important that we continue to push for equality, protections, and acceptance of the LGBTQ people everywhere. Whereas, in 2022, the LGBTQ community has seen a rise in the attempts to remove parental rights of transgender youth to provide physical and mental care as they see fit, to remove the rights of these youth to participate in life as the youth identify, and to remove the possibility that youth have the right to flourish and be their true selves. And whereas, 2022 marks the 24th year that the Solano County LGBTQ community has come together to show pride in Solano County through service and support of the LGBTQ community in organizations known as a Pride Center, Solano Pride Center, and Vallejo Gay Network. And whereas, during lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer Pride Month, as we wave our flags high and march boldly forward, let us celebrate how far we have come and reaffirm our firm belief in the equal dignity of all Americans. And whereas, the city of Vallejo proudly stands with LGBTQ community and with all communities who struggle for basic human rights, for acceptance, visibility, safety, acknowledgement, and equality in the quest for full equality under the law. Now whereas, be it proclaimed that I, Robert McConnell, Robert H. McConnell, Mayor of the city of Vallejo and the Vallejo City Council, do hereby recognize the month of June 2022 as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer Pride Month. Signed, June 14, 2022, by Mayor Robert H. McConnell, Mayor, and the Vallejo City Council. So thank you so much, you guys. This also makes a great fan, the air conditioning's kind of broken. And I think Tom Bilbo, who is from Solano Pride, is going to speak, and others, I think?
Good evening. My name is Tom Bilbo, and I'm the board chair and CEO of Solano Pride Center. And I want to say thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, city staff, and all of the public here, to help us celebrate this occasion. I am joined today by Solano Pride Board Member Lawrence Shine, a Vallejo resident, as well as members and allies of the LGBTQ community. Representation matters. Proclamations actually do matter, and this proclamation matters. It gives hope to people who may not be out. It gives hope to our youth who may still be trying to figure themselves out. It gives hope to parents of those youth so they know there is a community that is accepting and here for them. Your friendship and leadership means more to us than you can imagine. Vallejo was the first city in Solano to pass a proclamation honoring LGBTQ Pride Month. Vallejo, damn, I'm getting chucked up. Vallejo was also the first city in Solano County to raise the pride flag. This bit of history is something that we celebrate each year when we come before you and accept this proclamation, and also join you out at the flagpole to raise the pride flag. It's doing things like that that might seem just a regular turn of the page for you guys, but it means a lot to us. And I can tell you, coming from a very rural and religious background, that it means a lot to a queer Mississippian living in California. So thank you very much. I'd like to end by saying, if my phone will unlock, that besides the events that we have going on in June, Solano Pride also hosts an Up Bay Pride Festival in October. And we will be doing so again this year after being off for two years due to something that we call the pandemic. And we invite everyone to come and visit with us as we host this event in Benicia. We will be back here in Vallejo before you know it, down on the waterfront, so please join us whenever you see us. But this is for the whole county. And in saying that, I want to thank you all on behalf of the LGBTQ community here in Vallejo, as well as the entire county of Solano. So thank you.
Well, I got to go ahead and say something. It's been a while. I was here many, many years ago when Stephanie Gohnt gave the first proclamation for the city of Vallejo for the LGBT community. The city didn't have a flag, so I showed up with one. Since then, I served on GDRD. They now have a flag, and they now raise it, as well as a community center. And we're working on getting a few more educated and going forth. We want to thank you for everything. Thank you for allowing us this time. Have a good night.
All right. Well, thank you all very much. Very nice presentation. And with that, we will move on to our next item on the calendar, 8.6, First Community Forum. Naveed, would you please play our two-minute public announcement tape?
Members of the public who 6833 and use meeting ID 914-00750676 followed by the pound sign. When joining by phone, you can virtually raise your hand to speak by pressing star nine on your keypad. The public is encouraged to call into the meeting well ahead of when they wish to address the council to ensure you get a chance to speak. When joining via Zoom, you will be asked to enter a name and an email address. We request that you identify yourself by name, as this will be visible online and will be used to notify you that it's your turn to speak. You may use your real name or a unique name as your identification to be called upon to speak. Please note that offensive, derogatory, discriminative, or defamatory names will not be accepted into the meeting for commenting. When you wish to speak, click on the raise hand button. Staff will then move you into the virtual speaker's seat and unmute your microphone when it's your turn. Speakers will be notified shortly before they are called to speak. If you are calling into the meeting by phone, please press star six to unmute yourself. Please note the clock begins when you are unmuted, so you must be prepared to speak when called upon. Tonight's meeting is a regular meeting. Members of the public will be provided with an opportunity to provide public comments during the meeting for items both on this meeting agenda and for items not listed on the agenda that are under the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council.
All right. Well, thank you very much. The time is still running, so anyone who wishes to speak in person or virtually should contact either the clerk or call in. And we will wait for our two-minute time period to run down. I do note that we do have one card that indicated community forum, but is actually on the consent calendar item relating to the homeless shelter, so we will call you when that item is called.
Mr. Mayor, the two-minute timer is up.
I'm sorry? Say again?
The two-minute timer is up.
Okay, two minutes is up. So this time, we will proceed into our first community forum. Vice Chair, Vice Mayor, do we have any in-person speakers?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have, I believe I have four.
Okay, we'll call them each and give them three minutes each, and if we have time, we'll get to our virtual speakers.
Yes, Omar Crespo, Margaret Sharkey, Stetson Crespo, and Manuel Fretto.
If you'd just join us at the central podium there in the front, and that is an adjustable podium. It goes up and down.
Dear Mayor and council member, in the name of architecture and in the name of urban living, I'm begging you to reconsider an existing building solution versus a new construction for the project on Broadway.
That is on the consent calendar, and that will be called. Did you want to make your comments about that project at that time?
Yeah, I had to make, but it's in general in architecture because
Okay, well, this is community forum. This is on items not on the agenda. You're talking about something that is on the agenda.
But let me talk about Vallejo in general.
So with your understanding and cooperation, we will call you on that item. Do you wish to speak on anything other than that item at this time?
Okay, I will talk about
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so I came from Puerto Rico. I was working as an architect for the Department of Defense. I was in Scacks Island. When I went to Mayor Island, I saw this city that attracted my eyes. And I always questioned why General Vallejo and his wife, Benicia, without having any computer, they chose this location. And we have a beautiful downtown. If we do Google Earth, and we could see streets, parks, pedestrian, we didn't need a car. And I see why we're doing isolated projects without the sidewalks and everything. For example, there are buildings available. There is a building 44, Alabama, 1.3 million, $48 per square foot, waiting for someone to do something. Why do we have to do new construction? Vallejo is very, very lucky to have such beautiful buildings. Eight-month construction is impossible to do new construction. I'm an architect. It is very difficult. Renovations can be done in that time. So please, don't get me wrong. I am a dreamer, and Vallejo has lots of buildings that could be reused. Please offer a request proposal for people bringing options. We have so many buildings available. This city was made pedestrian. That's the way we're going back. COVID brought us back to the roots where we came from, families living together, walking. We don't need new construction spreading and spreading. We don't need cars. So please reconsider reevaluating existing buildings versus new and new construction. We don't need more construction. It is too risky. Eight months is not enough time to do a project. You could do renovations in three months.
Time.
Thank you. And thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I'm sure the Economic Development Department would appreciate them as well when we call. Our second speaker, please?
Yes, Margaret Sharkey, Staten, I hope I pronounced your name correctly, Crespo. Oh, item M. Okay, how about Manuel Frito? Okay, Randy Dawson? Okay, thank you. How about Dean Brown Jr., followed by Philip Thomas?
Okay, this is on community forum. You have three minutes, sir.
Okay, thank you. I'm here in regards to 335 Couch Street. We've been having some problems with the property. I'm not sure if this is the right. Okay, so we were having a lot of problems with that property and dealing with code enforcement, and we've been trying to do everything that they've asked us to do as far as keeping the homeless people out of there and taking care of the graffiti, putting up new fencing, making sure the place looks nice and, you know, is acceptable. We met all the requirements of David Sadie at the time. Now it's being deemed as a vacant piece of property, even though we have two buildings on the property. We've been using it to store our personal property. Well, my grandfather bought it 60 years ago. We've stored property there. Was never aware that we needed a permit to store private property on private property like that. And now we're being told that without a business license or a permit, that that piece of property is considered to be vacant, and they want us to join a program that we have to pay $411 a year and post it, no trespassing, and so forth and so on. And then we have to do, I believe it was quarterly photos to upload into the system. Well, we've, like I said, we've done everything we've been asked to do on the property. We've kept all the people out of it. We've hired security to keep an eye on the property to make sure we don't have those issues, and we haven't had any issues for quite some time now. As far as the graffiti is concerned, I mean, the security gets out there. By the time he gets out there, the guys are running down the street. And I mean, there's nothing we could do about it anyway except for cover it up. And I mean, that's costly, but you know, it is what it is. What I'm asking today is that we don't have to join that program. I think that we've done everything above and beyond what we've been asked to do with the property to make sure that we don't have problems there anymore with hiring the security. And we think that we don't believe that it is a vacant piece of property, and we don't want it to be considered a vacant piece of property moving forward.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Mr. Malone, is there somebody he can speak to? Okay, the city attorney apparently will be happy to speak with you. You guys can step aside, and we will continue at the meeting, but she can probably speak with you. Did you want to speak with him at this time or have him call you?
It's up to council. I mean, if you, I can give him my contact information, and he can call me tomorrow or the next day, and that may be easier. Gives us an opportunity to contact NLP and see what notices have been given to date. So that's probably, we'll give him more information than I could give him straight tonight.
Okay, so if you'd give him your phone number, is that acceptable?
I will give him my business card.
I spoke with, I think it was the deputy city attorney, and they weren't even aware that there were buildings on the property, and they also weren't aware that we had water and garbage service there.
Now you head right to the head of the office.
So let me give you my card, and I'll meet you down there, and I'll give you my card.
Perfect. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you very much. And would you call our next speaker, please?
Philip Thomas.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Philip Thomas, 20-year resident here in Vallejo. Recently, I attended what I believe is one of the community oversight meetings where we're having the community trying to develop what kind of oversight we're going to see for our police force. And at that meeting, I had an opportunity to ask a question, which Mr. Malone answered, about when the Bint Batch police report was going to be released. I was informed at that meeting that it was not going to be released. To say I was disappointed would be an understatement. If community engagement is what you want and community trust is what the police department needs, it has to start with transparency. Anything short of that, I don't understand how, I don't see how we would ever regain trust in our public service. That's the first thing. Secondly, I recently attended the emergency meeting of the surveillance board, in which they were asked to approve a policy which some of the members, a new member, hadn't even had a chance to read yet. They were constantly reminded that they only get to make recommendations. So my question is, well, what's the board for? If it's just a rubber stamp, what the city and the police department want in terms of policy? Again, disappointment. I would hope that we would do better for our citizens here in Vallejo. Get to know my face. You're going to see a lot of me because I'm going to be attending meetings regularly. I have retired. I have time. Thank you.
Appreciate your comments and your concerns. Do we have any further speakers? Naveed, do we have any virtual speakers?
We do, Mr. Mayor, but I believe it's the same person, but I can ask him. Ron Walson, do you want to speak in the community forum?
I'm waiting till the agenda item comes up. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so that will conclude our community forum at this time, and we will move on to our consent calendar and approval of the agenda, items A through N. Are there any council members who wish to pull any item? I'm assuming there are. Yes, Councilmember Ariola.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could please, please the chair to move item, consent item M to the action calendar?
Amos and Mary. That's the home key. Okay, that will become 8.1. Anybody else want to remove anything? No?
I need to recuse on item, no, that's on the action item, sorry.
Yeah, no, and we had a number of cards, I think, on 8.1 also. So what we're going to do is take the rest of the consent calendar. And let's see. Does anybody have any disqualifications or comments on any of the other consent items? If not, Vice Mayor, would you present a motion to approve the agenda and the consent items other than 8.1, which will be called independently?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve consent calendar, removing item M, and it will be item 8.1, and I also move approval of the agenda.
Okay, and please vote on the screen.
Motion carries unanimously with Councilmember Brown absent.
Absent.
Okay, that approves the consent item with the exception of 8.1, which is now on for further action. Madam Clerk, would you announce that item, please?
A man fiscal year 2122 budget to appropriate $12,91,866 for Home Key Grant Award. This is step two of two.
Okay, and I believe we have a number of speakers on this. We'll call the ones in person first. Vice Mayor? Go ahead. How many do we have in person?
Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. We have 11, I believe, yes.
Okay, 11. We'll give you three minutes. Try to speed it up, okay? Go ahead and start calling.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Mr. James Sisney, followed by Tim Heimstra, and then Patricia Loefus Rentschler. I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name, ma'am. So, James Sisney. Is he here?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we're using the front podium, which is adjustable.
Dear council members and mayor, my name is James Sisney, and I'm a Vallejo resident and former planning technician for the city of Vallejo. I'm going to race through my statement here due to the limited time. So, here goes. After diving into this program as formulated, I think I understand where some of you are coming from and why there is both a sense of urgency and a departure from the usual decision-making processes. That said, I have the following questions and concerns. Will the homeless want to go to the proposed facility? What sort of forces will be necessary to get them into that housing? Who will do that enforcement? I would suggest that the police themselves not be delegated to be doing any enforcement that is needed to get homeless people into the shelter. What will be the effects to the homeless of being compelled to live in a limited environment without the benefits that they may feel to actually being homeless, apart from the usual social norms and expectations? What will the environment be like for them as a group of people compelled to live in close quarters with other impaired individuals? Why was this effort not directed towards using and expanding upon the state hospital system, à la the Napa State Hospital, that have historically been the default for treating those with serious social dysfunction and/or mental illness, and which has more expansive resources available for a troubled population? Why was using an existing centrally located structure rehab for this purpose not considered? Would there have been cost benefits and an expanded permanent homeless solution possibly? It seems we are adding millions upon millions of granted monies without moving more assertively toward a broader, more permanent solution in favor of temporary limited fixes. Why has this project become a community issue without community engagement rather than a state-run operation as far as the seriously impaired? What are the costs of eroding more local democratic hard-won processes? And with the closed award process in this instance, as far as contractors, speculation about insider deals and corruption now exists. Will there be possible expensive legal challenges that will arise from this proposal? A project of this magnitude that gets neither public hearings before council, before the Planning Commission, insticates a sequel review, or gets adequate public noticing is problematic. While it is understandable that the governor's office wants to see something done about homelessness and soon, a rushed agenda may be consequential and timelines for construction may not be met. Who is going to pay for unforeseen consequences or potential lawsuits? And I... It goes on, but my time is up.
Thank you, sir. We'll call our second speaker, please, Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
Tim Heimstra, followed by Patricia Loefus Rentschler.
Good evening, City Council team. My name is Tim Heimstra. I'm the owner broker of Napa River Realty here in town. I also am a homeowner and pretty active in the community. Sell a lot of property. I'm starting a new Napa River Home Center. I am a licensed human... You know, we talked about ACD tonight with the Housing Authority. So, I am a licensed dealer with the Housing Community and Development. And I carry Skyline Homes and Silvercrest. But the reason why I'm talking about it, I owned a manufactured home dealership in the past, too, that I sold about 20 years ago, and I was a real estate developer. As a developer, you know, I can just tell you, cost-effectively, we can get a lot of things done. I do have some concerns about this particular site on Broadway that Factory OS is building. I'm actually kind of for it, but my concern is Wyndham Hotel. I want to ensure that we... You know, we want to win the battle. We don't want to, you know, win the battle but lose the war, so to speak. We don't want to lose hotels. And if Wyndham is saying that they're not going to come aboard with their project, losing those funds that go into the general fund, the transit occupancy tax, that's a big gigantic deal. And so, I would ask that just ensure that Wyndham is aboard prior to fully authorizing this. If they're on board, they are not quite on San Pablo Boulevard, which is a gateway. We want people that are coming from Napa Valley to... You know, many just can't wait to get out of Vallejo. We want to have a nice welcoming experience as they're coming from Napa Valley into the city of Vallejo. Highway 37, we have four lanes, awesome four lanes coming out of Marin County. You've got a two-lane ghetto road coming down Highway 37 to Vallejo. We need that to be beautiful, too, coming in. All of our gateways into the city need to be a big gigantic deal. And I want to ensure that we're empathetic for affordable housing. We're empathetic toward the homeless. And these aren't just a shelter, but this is actually apartments, which is pretty cool. So, please ensure that Wyndham is aboard prior to authorizing it. We need that intelligence and that strategy session, or that strategy coming from you. And I respect a lot of people's opinions that are coming here, but Wyndham is a big deal and a big factor in making a decision on this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Next speaker, please.
Patricia Loefus Rentschler, and then Roskal Kayangyang.
Good job on that last name.
Oh, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Patricia Loefus Rentschler. Good job. I'm kind of confused at the moment because I came in here with a certain agenda. And after listening to these prior speakers, the one gentleman that's on couch, Mr. Brown, I can verify everything he said is true because we've been friends for years and I go by that property every day. And I hope that everything can get resolved with you folks because that property has been his property and his family for probably 75 years. In the meantime, the gentleman that spoke about Vallejo, yes, Vallejo has a great... It's beautiful. They have a lot to offer. But right about now, when you come in Broadway, you cross many... There's homeless along the tracks. There's actually a homeless man living in the controller for the railroad at Redwood Street and Broadway. He's living in the box, the utility box, because I saw it open the other day. And as far as this project for this $12 million, I don't... I know that the homeless have to go somewhere. That project on Sacramento Street is terrific. I think it's a great situation. Looks like it's going to be a big help for homeless people. But it was a fraction of this $12 million, and I think we could do better with the $12 million. Hand it over to the Housing Authority to find homes for these people, not boxes. And the people I'm dealing with are the ones that don't want to be in a home. And I would urge everybody in the state of California to take them back up to Napa State where they could get help. Let them live on the land. I've been thinking about this for years, where they could go up there, do what they want to do. But at least they would have access to help. And if somebody has a problem letting Gavin Newsom know that his playland up there in Napa would be, you know, overrun with homeless, he gets to share in the problems, too. So, I think the homeless would do a lot better at the Napa State property. And the ones that want to live outside, let them live outside. But the rest need to be in these units. I think that one on Sacramento Street, like I said, is great and is a fraction of the cost for what the one out there on Broadway is going for. But if you get a chance, drive down Broadway in the 1900 block, all the wrecked cars. We're still dealing with the mess at 500 Couch. And I, too, am retired, and I will be happy to come down here and see your happy faces every Tuesday. Thank you.
Thank you. Look forward to it. Vice Mayor, call our next speaker, please.
Roskal Kayangyang, and then Omar Crespo.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and City Manager. Before I start, we need to have every council meeting to have sign language speakers, just like in other cities, just like at the school board meetings. Because if we want these meetings to be accessible to the public, we need to be accessible to those that have disabilities. I'm here to speak on this item tonight, opposing this proposal. On your agenda, it just shows to the public, you're just accepting a $12 million grant from the state. But the public has to dig through the staff report, dig through the documents to show that it's going to be located on near Broadway and Mini Drive, which is a major impact to the neighborhood. The location should have been transparent on the agenda. I'm also here to speak on behalf of Eloise Scott, a longtime Vallejo Filipino community leader, and the residents of Falcon and Mini Drive who live close to the proposed Broadway project. We, the residents, strongly object to this project for the following reasons. One, while the city claims the project will serve veterans and families in need, it is also likely to include people with drug problems. Two, this project's presence in the neighborhood would impair the whole character of the neighborhood, resulting in a decline of public safety and adversely affecting nearby small businesses and residents in that neighborhood, such as the Vargas Market and that plaza. Three, this project did not provide adequate advance notice that this will be a major impact to the residents, to the neighbors, not just in Vallejo, but also to American Canyon. The Broadway project is located in the wrong place, wrong location, on just approximately a half-acre parcel with limited parking and a higher-than-normal density problem. What's the location criteria? What's the requirement to have local amenities to a major use like this? This location does not comply with any requirements to have access to public transit, to services, to medical services. Surely, there are other suitable locations in Vallejo that have better amenities and services and can accommodate this major use, this major development. There are many senior citizens living in that neighborhood. They voted for you, all of you, in past elections. The residents are angry out there, and they respectfully request that this proposal goes back to the drawing board and find a new location right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kayangyang, we'll move on to our next speaker. Vice Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Omar Crespo, Margaret Sharkey, and then Stefan Crespo. Omar Crespo?
I'm here.
Oh, okay. Are you Stefan?
Margaret.
Margaret, I'm sorry. Yes.
Hello, Mayor, council members. The January 25th letter from Mike Malone to the mayor and members of the city council specifically states, "The subcommittee's charter was, quote, 'to develop a housing project that will benefit the region and be eligible for Home Key 2.0 funds in a way that is collaborative, feasible, and well-informed so that homeless individuals have access to housing and quality support services that results in positive outcomes for the individual and the community.'" There are too many contradictions in this charter's goals as it relates to this site selection. As a community and adjacent city, we do not understand the lack of transparency and why the city council is willing to sacrifice two residential communities, a regional commercial corridor poised for development at and the entrance to the city for just 48 units for the chronic homeless. The project will discourage investment in the north gateway, is contrary to the central commercial zoning corridor zoning, and contrary to the city's own position on economic development and revitalization of this commercial corridor. In addition, it will affect residents and existing small mom-and-pop stores that can only take so much. We, as a community, are requesting a neighborhood responsibility agreement to be included with this project if it goes forward, which will identify the resources the general public will have to request assistance to remove homeless Home Key residents from private property at all hours of the day and night within a reasonable time period. Who do I call to remove homeless loiterers who intimidate and harass neighborhood shoppers, especially after 5:00 p.m. when staff leave the facility for the day? Police don't respond, and 24-hour private security is prohibitively expensive. To those council members who voted to proceed with this project, I urge you to reconsider the site selection decision. There are many buildings available in Vallejo with more appropriately suited for these services, which can be rehabbed in eight months' period. However, if this project is completed, this will be your legacy. Your names will be forever be associated with this project and this building. And this is... And have you turned a deaf ear to your residents, small businesses, commercial property owners, and commercial developers, and ultimately undermined the development of this area? You will be gone, but your name and your vision will endure. And instead of a street named in your honor or statue erected, this iconic building will remind us daily of your egregious decision not to represent the interests of your city. And the property owner who owns the 13-acre pending for development is against it. And I know that Wyndham Hotel has spoken with you guys, but the property owner is...
Time.
His letter stands. And your legacy will.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor, our next speaker, please.
Staten Crespo and Mr. Manuel Frito.
Wow, Timothy is tall. Let me just bring this down. Okay. Mayor and council members, as others have stated, this is not really a not-in-my-backyard issue. This is a question of the efficacy of the model presented to the public. It is transparency with the protocols of this operation of the facility that I believe the surrounding community could greatly benefit from. While we were not notified, and our businesses and our homes, steps can be taken to reassure this wider community that this will be a real benefit to the homeless community with whom we have sympathy. Several concerning aspects should be expanded on further, not because the project serves a troubled population in need of our assistance, but because this project may not serve them well enough and will deteriorate at the entrance of our city. No rehab seems to be required to the residents who suffer from addiction. The lack of present security officers, which was spoken about on the June 7th meeting, that should be addressed. The presence of only three social workers, two juniors with associate degrees, and one senior with a bachelor's degree for a population of up to 48 individuals and/or families. The fact that these care workers are proposed to be present and available from only 8:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., leaving only a manager slash a maintenance man, who, from what I understand, is already divided between other facilities they operate. If these are all elements of an existing and effective model for these facilities operated by Shelter Inc., then it behooves them to reassure the stakeholders of the area exactly what the plans are to properly aid these individuals beyond simple housing. Housing itself is not the only thing needed to assist our homeless population. They need proper individualized care based on their specific needs, education programs given to them, valuable skills and avenues that will enter them into jobs. This is what I would like the operators, whether it's the Shelter Inc. or the city of Vallejo itself, to elaborate on further in order to instill the surrounding community, business owners, and other stakeholders with confidence about the project rather than apprehension. When this building is constructed and the facility is running, we, as the community, must put our faith in the city to maintain the building and the facilities that they will own and be liable for. I hope not only for these business owners and homeowners, but I also hope for the homeless community to which it will serve. But hopes and promises are not what will fuel the success of a project like this, but its clearly defined protocol and effective execution of said protocol, which will inspire public confidence in this project. If this project must stay at the entrance of Vallejo on the border of our sister city, the only viable space in the entire city, apparently, we have to ensure that it's done correctly so that it remains an example of what the city can accomplish for its underprivileged and not a demonstration of our inability to plan our projects appropriately and with the wider community in mind. The building is going to represent a multi-decade commitment that the city of Vallejo will ultimately be responsible for, and we need to keep that in mind as we proceed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Vice Mayor, our next speaker, please.
Manuel, Mr. Manuel Frito, followed by Randy Dawson.
Good evening, honorable mayor and members of the city council. I am a property manager at a commercial center that is right next to where this project is going to go, and we are constantly dealing with houseless individuals and trying to get them off there and having all sorts of problems. So I'm kind of speaking on behalf of the tenants and everybody else who faces these problems all the time. I know that these individuals would probably be a little bit under a little bit of a different situation, but I would still like to state that I'm all for finding a solution for the homeless problem in Vallejo. I drive around town and I probably see a lot of what you all see too, but I think that we could probably find a better location than this particular location. And that's pretty much all I got to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, our next speaker, please.
Randy Dawson.
That was him.
That was you. Eugene, Eugene Callum. I couldn't read your, yes, I'm Calhoun, right?
I'm Randy.
You're Randy, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Council members, thank you very much for your time in advance. I am the managing member for the project that's next door to this, the project that you're potentially going to approve the funding change. I called in last week. I unfortunately was out of town, but I'm only going to speak about one item right now, and that is the budget on this project. So when we did our project, we did a sources and uses, which is similar to what this project does. And the sources and uses are basically where the money comes in and where the money is expended. So that's the whole, making sure you've got enough money to do what you're going to do. Our project, we did a similar sources and uses. And I would like to submit these two documents when I'm done speaking, but the first one is the impact fees. Those impact fees are charged to every project based on whatever the square footage or units. We paid over $600,000 in impact fees for 15 units. Doing the math based on the city's numbers, they should be paying $2 million in impact fees. So there's a big discrepancy between what we paid and they paid, which is fine, more units, but on their sources and uses, they only show $470,000 in impact fees. So this project could have an issue right at the get-go. You also have contingency funds. Their contingency funds are less than $1 million for construction and just over $100 for soft costs. So you add those two together, if this is correct, they're a million four short right from the beginning on impact fees. So again, I'd like to submit these documents in, and you guys can review it. I also emailed this to you. The impact fees, I don't know if staff went through everything and reviewed it to make sure it was correct, but unless you're going to waive impact fees, that should have been brought up at the very beginning if that is the case, if you're going to waive $1.4 million in impact fees. Or it could be buried somewhere else in this. I'm not sure exactly what happened, but I would ask that you guys review this. If that is true, it's a major issue with this project moving forward because there's not enough money to do what they want to do. So, thank you.
Thank you. Can I do that to the clerk over there? Vice Mayor, call.
Yes, Mr. Eugene Callahan. Russ Carpenter.
Hi, my name is Eugene Callhoun. I have been a resident for American Canyon off of Montevina Road for over 20-plus years, and I got to say, we have endured a lot since we moved into that area. I have twin girls, so my first thing is safety for them. We have dog parks, we have a very passive park next to it. You know, people before me say a lot more eloquently than I can, but I can only say from my heart that this is the wrong place for the project, okay? There are, as other people say, there are other places for this project. Right down the street is a Walmart, it's already there. Utilize that. I'm all for taking care of people. I'm all for making sure that things are right, but I'm also for taking care of my children, my neighbors, my senior neighbors that are next to me. It is important that you guys listen to everyone that spoke here today and everyone that has expressed that you folks, please, do the right thing. That's all we're asking, okay? This project that you guys are doing and approving, it is not the right place, it is just not the right timing, it's just not right the way it's going about, having everything done. So please, listen to the people, listen to your neighbors, listen to people who vote you into your offices, and do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor?
Yes, Russ Carpenter, and then Jose Joey Carizales.
Mayor and council members, thank you for your time. I'm back here after being here last week, and I wanted to address some of the inconsistencies of what the application was versus what the explanations were for these various items, particularly the budget, which apparently this other individual knows a lot more about the financial end of things than I do, pointing out some of the deficiencies there. But also Shelter Inc.'s spokesperson, very vague on his answers, glossed over a lot of things. In response to a lot of things, he said, you know, it was not his experience that that would be a problem. You know, we're looking at a $1.7 million annual operating cost, and then the, you know, the $3 million shortfall, 3-plus million shortfall. That was being paid by, what, vouchers or something? I'm not quite sure how that all is happening. The gentleman said they have wraparound services. They've got social workers in there, 8:30 to 5:00, then they go home. Then they got a janitor around the clock that services a number of other properties. What happens at 3:00 AM when someone's having an episode and needs to be rushed to the hospital? I think a facility like this with the individuals that are going to be housed there need to be near psychiatric services. I think they're going to have great need of that. And to have them stuffed all the way out on the American Canyon border, I think is just ridiculous. Public transportation, they're going to give them, they can take public transportation if they need mental services? Or are they going to give them a voucher for Uber at 3:00 AM from the janitor? I mean, really? You know, I think there are many other issues, but also CEQA. As in Marin, the lawsuit that's there right now, you guys have a lot of, a lot of issues there. I would cite issue number seven and number nine, individuals in this application, not families, that's what the application says. Number seven, or excuse me, number nine, not to exceed the existing onsite development footprint by more than 10%. This is a four-story building next to a two-story building next to a dog park. How is this not exceeding? How is this not exceeding that spaced by, I don't know what percentage, but 10%? Anyway, that's, we're going to keep coming back, and there's a lot of people against us for good reason. And it's going to be your legacy, guys. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor, do we have any further speakers?
Jose Carizales, and then Don Jordan.
Three, yeah, three speakers left from the audience.
Yes, one more. Oh, Jose, correct.
So we'll close the speaker from the audience sign up at this point. Go ahead.
Jose Joey Carizales, thank you for pronouncing my last name correctly, my parents, and I appreciate that, in honor of my mom and dad. Well, the politics of fear is on full display. My friends are on drugs, my friends are this, my friends don't want help. My friends do not wake up early in the morning, look themselves in the mirror, and say, "I will be homeless today." Circumstance or unshelter, circumstances in their lives has cost them, has chosen them, has put them in that situation. Three main causes of unsheltered homelessness, affordable housing, income disparity, domestic violence, substance abuse. There's many subsets, subsections involved in that. My, I just, I just hope that you can see through the veil of ignorance and understand that this is a first step, that Vallejo has an opportunity, not only on Sacramento Street. Nothing has been done in the last 10 years. Three of you are going to be gone from the council. Make a good decision now. Make the right decision, the right thing to do. Eat on Sacramento Street, finally. Project Home Key, finally. How Vallejo got the money, I don't know, but God bless the staff. God bless staff for getting it done. I had doubts, honestly, but I am proud of you for getting it done. You are helping my friends, and I appreciate that. But I hope that you're able to see through all the negativity that Verdi Alega and I align my thoughts with yours. Disgusting, inhumane. And I'll stop right there. I just want this council to understand that you've got to do something. You've got to do something. Forget about the politics of fear. Nothing is perfect. Nothing is perfect. We can't stop substance abuse, we can't stop DUIs, we can't stop alcoholism, we can't stop people abusing their significant others. We may never end homelessness or being unsheltered, but we got to do something. People don't like next to my house, people don't like down my street, but you, as a policymaking decision-makers, you got to make the decision that is in the best interest of the citizens of Vallejo and my unsheltered friends. And I'm hoping the point-in-time count comes out soon so that we know exactly how many my friends are unsheltered. The right thing to do is to continue this project.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Last speaker in person is Don Jordan.
Good evening, council, Mr. Mayor. I sat here listening. My name is Don Jordan, I live down the street from the project, and I was surprised when I first saw it. And I'm a Realtor in town. And like most Realtors, they side with the landlords. But Vallejo has a housing problem. Our housing is going through the roof, and people cannot afford it. That is why you have people living in RVs and parking lots. That is why you have people sleeping in tents under bridges and in parks, because they can't afford it. Now, we do have a drug problem in town. We do have people that have mental health issues, but we also have people that have young families, that have children, that are living on the streets of this nation, not just Vallejo. And it's cool to say, you know what, this is a great project, but not in my backyard. I hear you, but whose backyard are you going to put it in? Where are we going to put them? I love to have Mare Island because it's isolated, you can give services and everything like that, but at the same time, it has to start someplace, and I'm willing to start in my area. And you know what? If they have an emergency at 3:00 in the morning, they call ambulances, they call medical facilities. Like you, at 3:00 in the morning, I want to be asleep. I don't want to be running around in the street. And I bet you, if you go to San Francisco, if you go to Oakland, and I know this company, and look at their facilities in San Francisco and Oakland, you won't see people running around the street at 3:00 in the morning because they won't be able to get back in. So I'm proud to come behind that gentleman that was in front of me, because I always tell people, I love to meet a Christian. I always love meeting Christians. Because they'll tell you, "I love mankind, I follow God," but not when they have to put their butts on the line. When you have to put your butt on the line, that's when you're a real Christian. When you have to feel pain, that's when you're a real Christian. When you have to deal with other people's issues that aren't your own, your brother's keeper, that's when you're a Christian. So when you come back here next week, when you come back, the session after that, think about how you can help your brother, your sister, that child that doesn't have a home to sleep on and they're sleeping in the streets. Think about them when you come back. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That completes our in-person speakers. Navid, how many virtual speakers do we have?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have four speakers.
Four speakers. We will close the virtual sign-up list at this time and call those four speakers in order, please. Three minutes each.
Yes, Mr. Ron Wasslon, go ahead, please.
Sure, thank you, mayor, council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My biggest concern is the risks of ground-up construction with a firm that has limited experience. Firm Foundation, the developer, as I understand it, you guys are going to be the property owner, he's going to be the developer, and then Shelter Inc. is going to be the property management company. But Firm Foundation is responsible for the construction budgets, the PG&E service applications, water connections, sewer connections, general contractor management, construction budget overruns, missed impact fees during development phase, missed timelines, the timelines for delivery, phone, internet, and other services connected to the project, Oliver installation. And as a council member, you must ask if Firm Inc., the one responsible for your $14 million budget that you're paying $800,000 to, has the expertise and the ability to deliver. Jake Metcalf, while a fantastic First Presbyterian pastor, I'm sure, which is his normal job, has a limited amount of experience as a developer. He's developed three small projects, all single-story, no stacked units, no elevators, no Home Key funding, and the, you know, was he even responsible for those budgets? In one project, in Goodness Village in Livermore, he was just the project manager. You know, what's the budget of those projects? I'm believing they're not anywhere close to the $14 million we have here. The one in Palauak was only two little modular units on a project, all of which was put on the existing pieces of land, and that brings up my other biggest concerns. Who's going to assume risk? Are you at least going to require a Phase 1 before ownership, which would every owner would require if they do a ground-up development? Are you going to require a performance bond of the developer, which would be required by every viable competent owner in hiring a development company? Well, my big, and the last concern is the risk of ownership that I don't think has been contemplated here. As an owner, your responsibility will provide a safe environment, not only for your own residents and your own project, but for the surrounding community and the surrounding properties. If one of your residents jumps off the roof, if a young lady at the bus stop is raped or kidnapped, or are there other on-site liabilities, are those all the things that the city of Vallejo is willing to assume and take responsibility for? I think not. That's too much risk. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, sir. We'll move on to our second speaker, Navid.
Phone number ending in 468, go ahead, please.
Hi, good evening, it's Ann Carr. Please confirm that you can hear me.
Yes.
Please confirm, thanks very much. So I actually had wanted to speak about item 8C on the So I actually had wanted to speak about item 8C on the consent calendar, and you guys approved the consent calendar without giving the public a chance to raise concerns. So I want to say that first. I wasn't going to speak on this item, except I will say, since I've had to wait for the opportunity to bring up 8C, that I am concerned about Vallejo operating under this business of, we don't have to give a, a public hearing or provide notice about these projects because we have this new law that gives us an umbrella that protects us. And I would say that while notice might not be required, in the interest of effectiveness of the project and neighborhood harmony, the city should be giving notice anyway and give actual notice where they truly reach people and not just say they've reached people when people haven't heard about the thing. If you mail something on a day and then say, "Well, I gave you notice," and the mailing went out the same day as the meeting, that's not a fact, that's not notice. I'm also concerned about contingency funds and, in fact, whether or not the funds are available and identified for the whole project. If not, it should not go forward until you have those. Vallejo has not gotten a great record here in terms of managing large construction projects. So we don't want to get ourselves into a situation where, oh, oh, we need a whole lot more money. We need to, we're going to have to dig into the general fund. And finally, I'd like to say that a, a lot of people will say about any location, "Oh, well, nothing's perfect, and so let's just go ahead." And that really is a cop-out. And if you would listen to neighbors, they, you would hear about problems that could affect the project down the line. So for example, the Sacramento Street project is across the street from known drug by, uh, corners and is right next to the homeless shelters. So you will create the largest concentration of unhoused in all of Solano County with one swoop. That's a problem. Had you consulted the neighborhood, we would have been able to tell you about that. But instead, the city just went forward and had the whole thing done before they told anybody about it, which is a problem. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ann. Our third speaker, please.
Russ Moroz. Go ahead, please.
Yeah, hi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Good evening, state council members and honorable mayor. My name is Russ Moroz. I'm the first vice president of investment properties at Parkinson Millishaw, one of the largest commercial real estate brokerages in the region. I've also been involved in the homeless issues in both Sacramento County as well as the city of Stockton. So I can tell you that this issue is very dear and clear to me. In fact, when I look at the homeless problem, I am, I'm frankly devastated. It's heartbreaking to see people living on the streets. And I can emphasize with the desire of all of us to frankly resolve that, because this is not right and this is not fair, and we need to do something about it. But what I'd like to emphasize, however, is that I don't believe that this issue is about not in my backyard or about doing something good, even if it comes at your, at your own expense. I recently won the humanitarian of the year award from the Association of Commercial Real Estate. Believe me, I want to address this problem. But this project really is the wrong project at the wrong location. It will have minimal positive impact with only 48 units. It'll have minimal positive impact on the area and dramatic and devastating impact on nearby shopping center owners as well as small businesses and all of their employees. This is what I would like to bring your attention to. We oftentimes want to focus on doing something good, but we don't understand the adverse conditions and the detrimental effects that these decisions sometimes have. And I can assure you that the detrimental effects of bringing this project here in this location specifically, along, along this corridor, will have a dramatic impact on small business owners, who many of whom frankly are not even aware of this project's existence and this proposal being put on the table. I've spoken to five owners of shopping centers, landlords, who've also reached out to their tenants of, within a one-mile radius of this project. Not a single one was aware of this project even being a thing. I think that is just, we're doing a disservice. And I think that this project in particular is going to have a very minimal impact while creating dramatically negative situation for the local economy and a lot of people also that are trying to, trying to survive the pandemic, trying to now survive this inflation crisis that we're in. And you're just bringing them down further and further by approving this. So I would just like to urge you to not do that.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to our fourth and final speaker, please.
Cassandra James. Go ahead, please.
Hello, Vallejolans, mayor, council members and staff. Personally, I have worked in permanent supportive housing for almost 12 years, specifically in the San Francisco Tenderloin as a case manager. It's disheartening to hear this disparaging comment about the individuals in regards to this project, Project Home Key, housing project. We cannot forget that we're talking about humans. Homelessness is an intersectional system issue that impacts folks who may have fled domestic violence, may have been written and lost their house due to the pandemic or even tragic loss. This is a rare opportunity for Vallejo to build affordable housing. This is the first step to work collectively to house 48 individuals and provide the needed permanent supportive services that's needed. As a resident that lives close to the site within the mile and a mother to two young kids, I welcome the chance to create a foundation for individuals to build this foundation. There is work that is already being done in the community from the semi-monthly homeless roundtables that I would suggest my neighbors to attend sometimes, to the targeted community outreach to the individuals that are currently living close by in their tents. Yes, it may have sucked that we did not have enough notice. However, we are at this point where we can come collectively to move forward to make sure that we address the homeless issues in Vallejo. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That will conclude our speakers at this time. And did staff wish to make any response to any of the comments?
Sure, Mr. Mayor, if I may. Just a few more project details. If you were not available to attend the last meeting, you can look up that recording as well, or you can go ahead and give me a call or an email, gillian.hays@cityofvallejo.net. I haven't heard from anyone, so I, I do hold the project application, and I'm happy to discuss details and take any input. So please feel free to reach out. This project is going to be applying for the project-based vouchers. That process through the Vallejo Housing Authority does have a screening and application process. To remind you all, there are background checks done, and that screening process will also be held by Shelter Inc., the operator, as well. Again, I just want to clarify, this is not a shelter project, okay? This is not like the Christian Help Center where people come in every day and it's changing beds constantly. This is a permanent supportive housing project. This is an apartment complex, okay? It consists of studio unit, studio units, so only studio units. And the wraparound services that are provided with this project include access to healthcare, access to mental health, access to job training, education, all of the things that this, that these people will need. They will have access to those services at this site. I heard a lot of people talking about access to mental health services, so I wanted to just let you know that these participants will have that access. Again, this funding opportunity was not geared towards hospital use. It was geared towards actual building housing, of housing units, which this proposal does. The city council held a public hearing on January 25th in which we mailed a notice to owner, property owners within 500 feet, as our code requires. Although not required for this project, we still did send the courtesy notice. We also sent another notice at the next public hearing, June 7th. So we've had two public hearings, both courtesy notices, and then we have tonight. Tonight is only the second budget amendment. It's not the project itself. It's just amending the budget to accept the grant money. There will be an additional opportunity for a public hearing and comment and input. So again, I encourage you to reach out if you have input prior to that meeting. We're shooting for June 28th. And again, we will mail notices that are always 10 days prior to the hearing to property owners 500 feet from the proposal, to be transparent, to provide that opportunity for your input. Three different opportunities. The meeting on the 28th will contain the contracts for the project. So if you have questions or concern about details or how the program is going to be run or input, this is the time to send that over to city staff so that we can consider those. If you have security concerns or landscaping, fencing, any, any concerns you have will, should be taken care of through those contract agreements that you can review. And again, we are willing to take your input. Just want to clarify, I did speak Friday with Wyndham, Wyndham Hotel executives, nine people on the call with myself, and have received three additional, two phone calls, one voicemail, and an email, so four total, from La Quinta Wyndham executives, that they are moving the project forward. They are. I understand the property owner is, you know, voicing that they have a concern, but I have my most recent voicemail from Friday about 3:30 PM. They are moving forward. They have not withdrawn the project. The project is still full speed ahead. Let's see. We are expecting, just with our draft pick counts, that we have about 1,000 homeless people in Vallejo. The Sacramento Street project is 78 units. So we need to do more. We need more than Sacramento Street. We need to provide those housing units. Sacramento Street's expected to be occupied January 2023. And again, we need to be able to provide housing levels at all different stages for the homeless here. Some people will need a shelter. They'll need a night or two to be able to come into the shelter and have a warm place to sleep and a hot meal. Some people will need some transitional apartments where they just need it for a few months or a year to get some services, to get on their feet and to be able to get a job and, and move back into their own housing. Some people need permanent supportive with mental health issues. They need an apartment that's going to be there with services forever. So there are different levels and layers to the housing need here in Vallejo, and we really need to be creative in providing all of those different levels of opportunity for our community members. Again, the site is within a half a mile of two transit stops. It does provide all the services discussed. I heard a lot of people asking to remove homeless from different locations throughout the city. We don't have the beds to do so. It's a great idea to say, "I don't like what I see on this street," or X or Y or Z, but we don't have anywhere to put them. So if we don't build the units, there is no solution. That's why we're moving these creative ideas forward. Very excited to be one out of seven cities in the state of California to receive funding directly from the governor to build a creative solution. Again, the details of the contracts and services will be described at open session June 28th. That will be posted, those contracts will be posted seven days before that meeting, so you can put your eyes on it and send in your comments, review those protocols, make recommendations to us. Another point of clarification, the Walmart property is privately owned, so the city doesn't control what happens on privately owned properties. It sounds great, but if the property owner isn't willing to move forward with the project on their property, there's nothing that we can do to force that. These property owners came forward and proposed the project at the site. Again, there will be, there will be an onsite manager 24/7 at the property, not just a janitor, but an onsite property management person that lives in the 48th unit. So if you have concerns, you'll have access to contact that person that lives there onsite 24/7. Again, Firm Foundation has four years of direct project management experience. They are partnering with Factory OS for construction. They do multi-level buildings all over the place, and they're very successful. They have their own engineers and contractors that they use, and they will be partnering on this project, moving it forward. So it is experienced developers, tried and true projects that have been successfully built. A Phase 1 has been conducted on the site. And again, no general fund revenues are proposed as part of this project, so the general fund is not expected to be impacted at this point. And then again, just in closing, the impacts of the unregulated houseless we see all across the city, it's a problem. And it is a problem to our businesses and, and, you know, markets and residents and property owners. This project will provide shelter and services for 47 people, and that is a movement towards making a difference in the community. If you have any other questions, I'm available. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor, your lights on.
Yeah, I just have a question, if I may, Mr. Mayor. There was a question about the cost of the Eden Housing facility on Sacramento, and I know that we, could you just speak to that so that we have clarity on the cost?
Yeah, I don't have the numbers off the top of my head, but I believe, I don't know, Christina, if you can remember, but I think it's actually costs more than this project does.
Thought we had the $30 million bond, correct?
Yeah. Christina? Yes, she's shaking her head yes. So that was 30 million, and, and we're looking at, you know, between 14 and 16, depending on how fancy we go with landscaping and other amenities, so.
Okay, any other questions? Is there a motion?
Yes. Oh, council member Laura Diaz has a question.
Council member Laura Diaz.
Yes, I'd like to say a couple of things. I want to clarify some things. You know, we, we've heard a lot tonight about this will be our legacy. Listen to the people that voted you in. I fully accept this as my legacy. And what people don't understand sometimes is that Vallejo, the people that voted us in, are more than what's filling this council chambers right now. We get emails. We receive people that call us and leave voicemails. I get stopped on the streets and asked about this and people supporting it. You guys don't get those emails. We don't get to forward those to you so you can listen and hear what the people that voted us in are asking us to do. So I, I want to make sure that, that that's clarified. We are listening to the people that voted us in. We're just not telling you who those people are because we can't call you every time someone calls us or sends us an email. You know, again, we continue to hear, and I'm going to be brief on this because I touched on it last time about the drug addicts and the mental health, you know, folks with schizophrenia, probably, you know, just folks that are no good, that are out there doing harm, that are, I sort of look at. And I'll repeat what I said last time. You know, you guys are forgetting that a lot of these peoples fought overseas for us. These are our veterans. These are women's that are, that are running away from a domestic violence situation. You know, these are human beings. It was stated that the project was going to have a minimal impact. It's only 48 units. Tell that to a person that is able to get one of those 48 units. You know, we expect people to be able to move on with their lives and be productive, but a lot, a lot of people can't. When you don't have a roof over your head, you really can't do a whole lot. So, you know, I, I just want people to know that we, we, we listen to what everybody says, and at the end of the day, we have to make a decision. And whether it's a good or a bad decision, I own it. I will own the decision that I make because I've been doing research on this. I've seen what our city has become. And just so you know, it's, it's North Vallejo today. It was Sacramento Street in the progress, but it will be other parts of the city because we're not going to concentrate all of our situations with people that living on, on the street in one place. So sooner or later, it's going to come to my backyard in East Vallejo and South Vallejo and everywhere else, because we need to be able to work together if we're going to get the city to move forward. So I am very sorry that folks feel that this is something that you don't want, but I will also tell you that I feel very content with the vote that I am about to cast, and I will take this on as my legacy so that my grandchildren can see what their grandmother did to help people.
Thank you. Council member Meesner.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not going to make too many comments because I think I said a lot the other night. I do, you know, when you see homelessness, I mean, there's a whole, as one gentleman said, there's whole different levels of homelessness, and sometimes the people that you see on the street are the ones that, they generally are the ones that have mental health issues. There are a lot of people, I used to see this woman just trying to look like a regular person. She would dress up and, and she would roll around with a suitcase, and she would try to fit in and look like a regular person. Those are the kind of people, you know, I mean, everybody deserves to have a space to live in, but they're not all like the, the person who's schizophrenic at Sixam Market. But I do get, I do understand when you see people like that, it get, it can be scary. And I do appreciate the fact that this particular project is going to have the services that other projects never did. You know, I think that this country has done terrible, a terrible job in, you know, in the 60s, the 50s, the 40s, and 30s with public housing, but the, the tide is turning. We're even seeing some of the management of our more problematic projects in the city just make them much better. So, you know, and I think people don't understand, so correct me if I'm wrong, but as I understand, the Ninth Circuit Court ruled that a city cannot move someone who's camping on public property unless they have a bed to offer them. So I don't think people realize that. So we're sort of, you know, we can't say, so we have to create these we have to create these, the beds, and every city does. I mean, I hope that American Canyon is doing it too. And then also, so Factory OS, we're really proud of Factory OS here in Vallejo, you know, they took over a gigantic, one of the hugest buildings I've ever seen, and they used to fix submarines in this building. And now they have this huge factory off-site, it's called Offsite for OS. So they build these container-type structures, and then in the building, and then they ship them off and stack them up. And it reduces building costs from, I think, $600 a square foot to $200 a square foot. And they've had projects all over the Bay Area that are really beautiful, and we've already seen some of these units for the Sacramento Street project, and I've, they're really nice, actually, I wouldn't mind living in one myself, when I was living in an apartment. But I do understand there's a lot of fear, and I appreciate that this project will be managed well, and it's going to have all the services on site, so, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Ariola.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I want to give my empathy out to those folks out in American Canyon, the seniors that live out in North Vallejo, and just the overall project, it still has not felt comfortable with me, and there's a piece missing, and I'm not sure what it is. It's not one that just kind of goes zing, and it's not just because, oh, it's the right thing to do, or we got, it's better than nothing, it's just something is missing for me. And I don't, not quite sure how to pinpoint what that element is. My concern was, as of last week, and between now and last week, when we received communication from the developers, and what they were proposing and have been working on. And I thought, wow, this is exactly what council, you know, has been, the primary goal was economic development. And there we have that economic zone, that corridor between our neighbor and us, and I thought, wow, this is really terrific. They voiced somewhat a different story than what our Assistant City Manager said at that time, between now and then. So that really raised hairs up on me. Economic development over helping the unhoused is very, very, a very tough thing, but with economic development, we will have more of a tax base where we can use that funding, set that aside for more projects. I have a problem with Shelter Inc. A good project in the private sector or the public sector is only as good as its management. And if this project, this Broadway project, is going to be a success, it rests on the shoulders of that management team, Shelter Inc. That is another concern that I have, knowing their history. So can these two, and I'm asking council, can these two projects coexist and be successful, the both of them? Can we, as a council, have a consensus to vote for this and still have the respect of our neighbor of the north? I often think, what if they built one near the border of Napa? And they built a project like this at the Napa border? Or our neighbors to the east with Benicia, and getting something on our border for them to build? We have to also look to our neighbors as well as our own community, this is how I feel, because we have a, we have to coexist. And we want to bring in taxes, this project will not bring in taxes. So I'm really mixed on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Do.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to everyone for your comments this evening. I will, you know, be a little repetitive myself from comments I made last week, but I can understand a lot of people's concerns, having, you know, driven down there and seeing what's currently there, knowing the tents and the encampments that we're seeing, you know, all over town. And I imagine that a lot of the concern comes from a vision of that being concentrated on that site, and more of that being attracted to that area. But in actuality, having toured several facilities that are going to be what this one is, that are permanent supportive housing projects, they're beautiful, and the people that are in them are such inspirations, hearing what they have gone through, and what they have overcome, and how they are just so excited about their futures. And for us to be able to give that opportunity is incredible. And beyond that, it will improve the area, it will make it better for the businesses, because we will be helping some of those individuals that are currently on the street, causing litter, garbage to be around, we'll be helping them. And so we will be reducing that issue. And further, you know, I have to say, Governor Newsom spoke to the Board of Directors at the League of Cities, telling us how he, you know, this was several years ago, how he intended to take on the homeless issue, and he intended to find a way to begin solving it. And this is one of those pieces. But beyond that, you're going to be hearing more about CARE Court. That is proposed legislation that is coming, that is going to help with mental health and substance abuse, and getting people the help they need, and getting them off the streets. And so that will help those individuals, even though we're not going to be able to house all of them, even the ones that are not currently housed, they're going to be able to get those resources too. And so more is going to come within the next year. Actually, we're going to have a speaker, and I'll talk about it later during my report out at the end of the evening, but that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Verdego.
Yes, thank you. I know that the agenda item is to adopt the resolution to revise the budget, but I want to make comment. I want, I'm not going to repeat most of the comments, but I want to echo the comments of Mr. Carrizales and Mr. Don Jordan. I appreciate you speaking up for those folks that we say we all care about, and thank you. So I just wanted to again echo, repeat my comments last week. I take offense, and it is not fair for folks to characterize mentally ill people as belonging to Napa State Hospital. Folks that are at Napa State are our seriously mentally ill population. The folks that are homeless do not fit that criteria, okay? So we have a responsibility to take care of them, you know, let's, we're all human beings here. And when a colleague of mine says they have doubts about Shelter Inc., okay, show me the facts. What are those, what is that history that's making you, giving you doubts on why is Shelter Inc. not appropriate as the, you know, that will be providing case management? Show me the facts. Until then, Shelter Inc., as far as I know, because we deal with them with the county, they would not be getting county contracts if they have a very poor track record. So with that said, you know, I'm going to, if it's okay, Mayor, can I go ahead, offer the resolution? Okay. I recommend that we adopt a resolution to amend the Capital Grant and Contribution Fund, number 221 fiscal year 2021, 2022 budget, to appropriately home key, appropriate home key grant funds for $12,986,866 to be used for implementation of this grant.
Thank you. Please vote on your screen.
Motion carries with Councilmember Ariola and Mayor McConnell opposed.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to our action calendar at this time. Madam Clerk, would you call the first item on the action calendar?
This item is a public hearing and adoption of resolutions approving fiscal year 2223 budget, fiscal year 202223 positions and salaries, the Blue Rock Springs Golf Course Fee and Charges Schedule, the purchase of city vehicles and equipment scheduled and funded for replacement in fiscal year 2223, and miscellaneous goods supplies and equipment purchase orders fiscal year 2223.
Thank you very much. And Navid, would you start the public sign-up clock? Anyone who wishes to comment on this can either fill out a card and provide it to the clerk, or indicate to Navid online that they wish to do so. We will have the presentation at this time, and we will close our public speakers' sign-up after the presentation, when speakers will presumably receive three minutes as usual.
May I say a few words, Mayor?
Certainly, your budget.
So we do not have a presentation on the item tonight, as we presented a presentation twice before this meeting. We did receive 10 questions that we provided responses to. Initially, we were going to go and over each one of these, but just wanted to kind of highlight that we did respond to the 10 questions, they're available for public to review at their leisure, and if anyone has any questions or particular questions out of that 10 that they want us to respond to, we are here to do so. So I'll turn it back over to Erica.
Thank you. Please proceed. Did you have any comments or you wanted to make?
I really don't, I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay, are there any questions from any council members? There don't appear to be any. So we will proceed to our public comment. Madam Vice Mayor, do we have any speakers on this in-person?
I don't believe there are any speaker cards.
We have no in-person speakers?
No.
No? Okay, do we have any virtual speakers?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have two speakers.
Two speakers, okay, we'll close the further sign-up on 9A for virtual speakers, and call those two speakers in order with three minutes each.
Andrea Source, go ahead, please.
Yeah, can you all hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
I wanted to speak broadly on this, that saying, show me your budget and I'll tell you your priorities. We've been being told pretty consistently recently that we don't have money for most things that the public wants. We don't have as much as a warming shelter for the unhoused, but we see these meetings, and we have no problem buying police technologies and adding new senior management positions, like a second Assistant City Manager, or giving staff raises and bonuses, or hiring consultants without competitive bids, or giving council money for nonprofits. And then we're told that we need to increase sales taxes to fix the roads, which would then hit our most vulnerable during a time when we're still struggling with COVID, and we're also struggling with inflation. Why don't we think about how we're spending money that we have first? There is a reason that public trust and approval of our city management and city staff was so low in the public policy surveys. We keep hearing about how this new leadership is different, we shouldn't be punishing our current leaders for the sins of the Father, and that is true, but we're seeing over and over again a continuation of the same policies and the same lack of transparency. We have another budget here that didn't have any public input, we've got another massive increase in the police budget, which takes up almost half our general fund, but we've not had any progress on the promised reforms or the accountability for the badge bending. We've got a Police Officer Association that's openly warring with the chief, so we probably want to be asking how we're addressing those issues before we give them another big raise. But the thing I want to really focus on tonight is the nonprofit money that council's being given, that's kind of a slush fund. Last year, that was super, super sketchy, to see council get $400,000 to give to nonprofits that they're choosing, but it's even weirder to codify it into the budget. And I want to thank Councilmember Ariola for pointing it out last meeting, I was kind of shocked that she was the only one. It seems really unethical, and although it might technically be legal according to the city attorneys, if you think about it for a few minutes, it's kind of horrifying. It feels like staff are bribing city council using taxpayer dollars in exchange for their cooperation in approving the budget. Then there's the second layer of potential corruption with relationships and exchanges between the council members and the nonprofits they give to. It's just blatantly against the state ethics training that we all took, which discourages even the appearance of impropriety. And although it might not technically be illegal, it's like I've said before at these meetings, just because something isn't technically illegal doesn't mean that we should be doing it. And the crazy part about this, which Councilmember Ariola has pointed out, is that Vallejo does already have a way to support our nonprofit community through a democratic process, which is participatory budgeting. We shouldn't need to take that power away and give it to council members with no proposals or vetting or accountability, we already have participatory budget, and it's just mind-blowing that we would give that appearance of impropriety and lack of compliance. So if you could...
Thank you very much for your comments. We'll move on to our second and final speaker, please.
Phone number ending in 468, go ahead.
Go ahead, Anna.
Okay, Ann Carr, you can hear me?
Yes.
Please confirm. Number one, I have a serious procedural question, what happened to bringing up items for the consent calendar? I want to talk about AC, as in Charlie, the catalytic converter thing. Why can't the public have, be able to pull items from that? But about the budget, I will bring up concerns about the budget, and the biggest one is that I was, I'm just wondering, how long do we need to wait in Vallejo before we see some attempt at innovation and outsourcing for solving our problems with the money that we have versus raising taxes? So I really, I haven't seen anything yet, I hope maybe by mid-year, we can see some innovation and some different ways of doing things, because we're limping along, we've starved city departments except police and fire, and we're not making much progress. The other thing that is a big concern to me is, it has been raised in the poll that you guys just paid for, that homelessness is a top issue for Vallejoans, that was also raised in the poll that Felicia did for how to spend the art money, it was also raised by the Chamber of Commerce. And so while we have these two projects for permanent supportive housing, I just really wonder, why don't we take the money we've swirled away for the Navigation Center that seems to be going exactly nowhere, and get serious about some sort of tent site, RV camping, something to get people out of encampment, and at least into an area where they have basic services. We have encampments all over town, it's just not acceptable, not for the people who are living that way, and not for the rest of the community. And to reiterate something that I mentioned in the letter that I sent you all, you only need to look at where volunteers are stepping up to pick up the slack for Vallejo, to see where we're under-invested. So, street repair, the homeless, and cleaning up debris and garbage, these things have really gotten exacerbated during the pandemic, and I don't see that the city is taking them very seriously. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That will conclude our virtual speakers as well. Do we have any questions or comments from council members? Yes, Councilmember Loeira Diaz.
Yes, I wasn't going to address the discretionary funds, but I will, because I am very offended by the fact that people think that we're just handing out money left and right to our privileged individuals. I'm going to invite everybody that's listening right now, whether you're in the chamber or outside the chamber, to stop by tomorrow for GVRD soccer program. The money that I gave to them, $17,000, has enrolled 120 children, children that everybody complains that there's nothing to do in Vallejo, that these kids have nothing to do, but when we try to do something, then you complain as well. We know our city in the same manner that you guys do. We live here, I've been here 38 years, I know what's going on. So this money that we receive is being utilized properly, and I'll sit down with anybody who wants to sit down with me to go over who I gave money to. I posted it the other day, because there was a lot of people complaining about how we spend that money. I posted where my money went. And with the money that I'm going to get again, I will do the exactly same thing, and next year, and the following year, and as many times as I get that money, I'm going to put it towards the children, because they need something to do. I'm sorry that people feel that way, but it's not easy being up here, criticized for everything that you do and you don't do. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Vice Mayor Verdego.
Yes, I wanted to piggyback on Councilmember Loeira Diaz's comments. The list of nonprofits where we spent our discretionary money last year, that was $57,000 each, it is all posted on the city website. And in all transparency, if you want to nitpick, I myself gave money to the Filipino community, the New Dawn Foundation, the Vallejo Arts Community Foundation, what What else? I had a long list of nonprofits, and I have a list of 15 nonprofits this year to give out monies to, because they need it so badly, and all those monies will be put to good use. Oh, I gave money to the Christian Health Center and Emmanuel Arms to help them purchase a laundry facility to help the homeless folks that do laundry at Emmanuel Arms. Emmanuel Temple Church, but their nonprofit is Emmanuel Arms Incorporated, and that's a nonprofit that I gave money to last year, and they'll be receiving some money from me as well. And I always tell them, "Thank the city of Vallejo," because it's taxpayers' money that is being put to good use, and it has an immediate, immediate impact on individuals, childrens, the arts community, and the homeless community. So, again, for those that don't know what to use with their discretionary funds, Councilmember Loretta Diaz and I myself would gladly take those monies if you don't want to use them. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Meester.
Thank you, Mayor. I had sent a list of questions to the city, and they graciously turned the answers around pretty quickly, because I was sort of later, late last night. Because of all the complaints we've been getting about how the city budgets, when I don't think people really understand the complexity of governmental budgets. It's not like, I mean, people seem to act like, you know, think differently, like Steve Jobs said, "Well, you know, it becomes really difficult when you have all kinds of laws and legislations that tell you exactly how you have to spend their money." And I, at some point, I think Councilmember Do might have mentioned that there's some kind of educational program. It'd be great to have, like, a League of Cities program to come here and show people how budgets work, for the people that are, especially the ones to criticize, because if they really understand how complex it is, sometimes it's, it's like whack-a-mole, frankly. You know, if you decide you want to move some money out of the general fund over here, well, you can't, because that general fund is a match to the federal grant. And if you move that over there, they'll use that money. It's so intertwined. It's actually very simple, you know, one plus one equals two, but it's also very complex. And I think a lot of people don't understand budgets, frankly, in the city. And I used to, I was a budget director, so I had to do all that. And I do want to mention one thing about discretionary funds that the city might not, or citizens might not realize is PB is pretty limited, and it's, a lot of people don't even qualify. Even though they're nonprofits, they don't even qualify. For instance, the Myra Theater Guild, that I know Councilmember Ariola and our Mayor McConnell's wife work with the Myra, they tried to get money from PB, and they weren't qualified to get it. So, I supported them. I supported them, as well as other events or other projects. So, I just want to put out a couple of things here. There's a long, it's a long item, but let's see. Well, the idea, so the idea that the city could replace professional city positions with volunteers, you know, I think you can get maybe some people here and there, but it's going to cost the city, apparently, it's going to, for the city to bring up our CPI to the same as the county, it will take $24 million over five years, and bringing in volunteers is not going to save that kind of money. What's that? Twenty-four per year. That's $125 million. You know, that is $125 million. I think that's, people just don't understand the magnitude of some of these costs. You know, in PB, they taught, they, when PB first came to town, when people wanted potholes filled, we were told at that point, and prices were a lot different back then, it took $185,000 to pave one city block. So, I just, I've just become very frustrated, because it's really easy to say, "You need to be innovative." Well, I think the city is trying to be innovative with a very tight budget and a very complex budget. There's only so many things you can do in government budgeting. So, it's, I'm just frustrated by it. And I want to thank Reka and her team for all your great work. So, I think I'm done. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Let me just observe that, for budget purposes, about 65% of the general fund is already pre-dedicated, if you will. We don't necessarily have a lot of discretion to move a lot of things around as much as we would all want to do. So, our options are extremely limited. But going forward, either mid-year or hopefully maybe for next, next budget in the 2223 cycle, what I would like to do is see some different percentages put up. Currently, we're spending 26% of our general fund on fire. I'd like to see that reduced to 20%. Our police is at 45. I'd like to see it reduced to 40. Our public workers is at 8. I'd like to see that increased to 15, because gosh knows, as illustrated by the amount per lane mile, we'll never fix our roads without a substantial contribution. For our planning, we're at 5. I'd like to see them go to 8. For citywide services, they're at 7. I'd like to see them go to 9, and for administrative expenses, I'd like to see them go from 9 down to 8. That's 100%. But that's going to require a different value system than we currently have, and hopefully more income. If we don't develop income, then we'll never get out of this hole that we are in, which means we do have to give credence and deference to economic development. And anything which prevents that economic development, I think as a council, we need to take a very serious look at whether or not we should still approve it, because if we don't develop our tax base, and we don't have a tax base like Richmond does even, we're going to be the same place we are in 10 and 15 and 20 years. It's that simple. Now, we can't do a lot about the school district, but we can do something about our tax base and the type of businesses we want to go after, and also accommodating them in the planning process, so that you don't continually hear these complaints about, "It's taking too long. They want too much minutia. I can't get an answer. One person contradicts the other." You know, we've made progress on it, yes, but we haven't made enough. And so, all of those things that go into economic development and a budget from the general fund that reflects these goals, I think is desirable, but I think we're going to need to change the mentality of the council before we get to that point. So, as for this particular budget tonight, I'm prepared to vote in favor of it, because I don't see too many other alternatives in all honesty. Thank you. Anybody else want to comment anything, or do we have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, so, hold on. I move that we hold a public hearing and adopt resolutions approving the fiscal year 2220. Oh, is, am I on there? Hold on. Hold a public hearing. Yeah, okay, sorry.
Yeah, we better, we better do that first.
Yeah, we're doing a public hearing.
So, we'll put that, we'll put your motion on hold and ask, do we have any public speakers? I don't see too many people in the audience.
I don't have any here.
We have none. Okay. And do we have any virtual speakers? We have none. So, the public hearing is now closed. Continue with your motion.
Okay, good. Thank you. I move that we hold, okay, a public hearing, which we just did, and adopt the five resolutions as follows. Number one, resolution adopting the fiscal year 2223 budget for the city of Vallejo as set forth in Attachment B. Number two, resolution adopting the fiscal year 2223 positions and salaries as set forth in Attachment C. Number three, resolution approving fiscal year 2223 Blue Rock Springs Golf Course fees and charges schedule as set forth in Attachment D. Number four, resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase vehicles scheduled and funded for replacement in fiscal year 2223 as set forth in Attachment E. And number five, resolution authorizing the city manager to execute purchase orders for the vendors and amounts for fiscal year 2223 as set forth in Attachment F.
Would you please vote on your screen?
Motion carries with Councilmember Ariola opposed and Councilmember Brown absent.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to 9B. Do you want to break here? It's been since 7:45? No? Yes? No? Okay, no. Then we'll go on to 9B. Madam Clerk, would you announce that, please?
Public hearing and adopt a resolution approving annual levy report collection of assessments on properties in the Bordoni Ranch, Carrier Oaks, Garth Ranch, Glen Cove 3, Glen Cove 3, 2015, Hunter Ranch, 3, Marine World Fairgrounds, Marin View, Northeast Quadrant, Sandpiper Point, South Vallejo Business Park, and Town and Country 2V Landscape Maintenance Districts for fiscal year 2223.
Thank you. First, we'll start the public clock. Second, do we ask for disqualifications from anyone? Councilmember Do.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have to recuse as I reside in that district.
Thank you. You have so noted. Anybody else? There are none? So, we will wait out our two-minute clock. Anybody who wishes to address the council on this should submit a card or sign up virtually, and we will recognize them when called upon. And pending the completion of the time to sign up to speak on it, do we have a presentation by staff? Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Melissa Tigbaugh, Public Works Director. This public hearing is to consider a resolution to approve an overview report and levy collection of assessments for landscape maintenance districts formed pursuant to the 1972 Improvement Act. All of the neighborhoods were listed by the city clerk, and all of them have no change except for Glen Cove 3, 2015 Zone A, B, and C, which will reflect a 4.2% increase, which is $120.05 to $125.14. Based on the overview report prepared by SCI Consulting, all of the LMD assessment rates for these districts, except for Glen Cove 3, 2015, are proposed to remain the same as fiscal year 2122. Glen Cove 2015 annual assessment rates are proposed to increase to improve level of service and to set aside funds for the Parkway Landscape Rehabilitation Project, Capital Improvement Project. This concludes the staff presentation. And may I note that I believe 9B is also to be recused by Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, we, she had misread this item, and so, the Vice Mayor has recused herself, as she lives in one of the assessment districts associated with this item.
So noted. Okay. Thank you for the staff report. At this time, we'll close the public comment sign-up period. Do we have any speakers on 9B, either in person, none, or virtually?
We do not, do not have any virtual speakers.
Okay, then we'll close the public hearing and return to the council. Chair will move approval of 9B on the assessments. Do we have card? Great. 9B? Okay, you want to call that? We have any? We have none? Okay. We have none. All right. So, Chair has moved the motion. Would you take the roll on that, please?
Mayor, if you want to call on me?
I had already moved the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's on the screen now. Please go ahead and vote.
Mr. Mayor, we're having technical issues. It's on the roll. Okay, lock your vote in now. I'm missing a vote.
I keep pushing. It keeps going away.
Motion carries unanimously with Councilmember Brown absent and Vice Mayor and Councilmember Do abstaining due to conflict.
Thank you. We'll move on to 9C. Ask the public clock be started for that. Madam Clerk, would you announce 9C?
Public hearing and adopt a resolution approving the engineers' report authorizing the collection of ad valorem assessments on properties in the Cimarron Hills, Madigan, College Hills, Costa del Rio, Somerset 1 and 2, Greenmont/Seaport Hills, Monica Place, Ridge Crest, Somerset 3, Spring Tree, Fleming, Summit 2, Town and Country 1, Woodridge, Hunter Ranch 1 and 2, and Glen Cove 1 and 2 Landscape Maintenance Districts for fiscal year 2223.
Thank you. We'll start the public sign-up clock and call on Councilmember Loretta Diaz.
Yes, I need to recuse myself, as I own property and live in the Greenmont Seaport Hills.
Okay, so noted. Thank you. Any other disqualifications? There are none. Staff report.
Good evening again, Melissa Tigbaugh, Public Works. This public hearing is to consider a resolution to approve an overview report and levy collection of assessments for a landscape maintenance districts formed pursuant to 1911 Landscape and Lighting Act. The districts were listed by City Clerk Abrahamsen, and based on the overview report prepared by SCI Consulting, all of the LMD assessment rates for these districts are proposed to remain the same as fiscal year 2122. This concludes the staff presentation.
Thank you. We'll open the public hearing. Are there any cards in person? Are there any virtual cards?
We have none.
Then we will close the public hearing.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, one hand was just raised.
Oh, we do have one. Okay. Would you call that person, please?
Chris, go ahead, please.
You know, on the Landscape Maintenance District, it astonishes me that the parking lots in the downtown can't have the weeds abated, particularly Parking Lot J, Parking Lot H, Parking Lot L, the main entrances to your city, it can't even be weed-whacked. When I moved to this town, the parking lot in front of the ferry terminal was a dirt pavement. It didn't, it wasn't even paved, and you can't whack the weeds there for the parking lot that has been not used since COVID started? It's just weird that you can't take the heart and soul of the city, the epicenter of the city, and do some weed abatement. I have a weed whacker. I'd be more than willing to do it. So, if you can't do it, somebody will. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Blatter. Mr. Malone, maybe you can have Public Works take a look at that and see if it needs to be done. Thank you very much. Okay, any further comments? There are none. Any council comments? There are none. Vice Mayor, would you present the motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I move that we hold the public hearing and receive input and adopt a resolution approving the engineers' report and ordering the levy and collection of assessments on properties in the 14191 Act Maintenance Districts for fiscal year 2022 and 2023.
Okay. Would you please vote, please?
Motion carries unanimously with Councilmember Brown absent and Councilmember Loretta Diaz abstaining due to conflict.
Thank you. That concludes that. Would you announce 9E on the calendar, please?
Public hearing and adopt a resolution approving the engineers' report ordering the levy and collection of assessments on properties in the Hidden Brook Maintenance District for fiscal year 2223.
Thank you very much. We'll start the public sign-up clock on that and ask for the staff presentation, please.
Good evening. This public hearing is to consider a resolution to approve an overview report and levy collection of assessment for one Landscape Maintenance District formed pursuant to the 1972 Landscape and Lighting Act. This district is for Hidden Brook LMD. Based on the overview report prepared by SCI Consulting, assessment rates for fiscal year 2223 will decrease from $695.80 to $611.04 in order to decrease the contribution to the Rehabilitation Reserve Fund as it is currently adequately funded. This concludes the staff's presentation.
Thank you very much. We'll open the public hearing. Ask if there are any speakers on this. Vice Mayor in person? Virtual?
We have none, Mr. Mayor.
None? Okay, thank you. Then we'll close the public hearing and ask the council for a resolution on this. Vice Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I move that we hold a public hearing, receive public input, and adopt a resolution that approves the engineers' report and orders the levy and collection of assessments on properties in the Hidden Brook Maintenance District for fiscal year 2022 to 2023.
Motion carries unanimously with Councilmember Brown absent.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to E. Garbage Bills. Madam Clerk, you announce that?
Public hearing and adopt a resolution confirming assessments of delinquent garbage bills and authorizing the levy of said assessments against their respective properties and further authorizing the city manager to file a list of assessments with county Solano Tax Collector.
Thank you. We'll start the public clock on that. Ask for staff report. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Derek Crutchfield, Acting Environmental Services Manager, City of Vallejo. In the City of Vallejo, garbage service is mandatory. All residents and businesses must have garbage services, and they must subscribe and pay for that service. A property owner may authorize his tenants to pay for garbage service. However, ultimately, they will be responsible for the garbage bill because it follows the property. Recology has provided staff with an assessment list that contains accounting for all unpaid garbage bills through March 31, 2022. Pursuant to the municipal code, the city council is required to conduct a public hearing to consider the assessment list. Upon confirmation unless said properties, I'm sorry, unless said assessments are paid by July 15, 2022, the city manager will be authorized and directed to place the assessments on the 2223 property tax roll. Recology sends out courtesy notices to all affected property notices, and Recology puts the information in a quarterly newsletter informing property owners of their responsibility to ensure that tenants pay their garbage bills. That's the end of the presentation.
Thank you very much. We'll open our public hearing. Do we have any speakers in person? None? Do we have any virtual speakers?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
No speakers. Okay. We'll return it to the hands of the council and close the public hearing. Mr. Crutchfield, you're saying that we have garbage collection on all properties, residential and commercial. Do we ever audit that, verify it, to make sure we really do have people signed up?
That's yes and no. Yes, we do audits periodically. Recology does. Basically, if someone puts out trash, that's how we know if they have or have not subscribed for services. Ultimately, we have a lot of neighbors who don't want people putting trash in their containers, and they will inform us. So we have a lot of residents that will definitely and businesses that inform us if someone is putting trash in their cans.
I'd urge you to take a look to see whether or not we really have everybody who should have an account, actually have an account, because I think you might find that we do not, at least from my experiences. Okay. Any other questions or comments from council? Councilmember Ariela?
Thank you, Mayor. What happens with the property, Derek? What happens with a property in Vallejo that has been commandeered by people that are not on the lease and have taken over the property owner's building, residential building? And is that property owner, it's going through some issues right now? I'm just trying to think ahead. I don't know. They are throwing their garbage away, not using her trash bins. They're throwing it away on their own throughout the neighborhood. But what happens to a property owner that has their home in jeopardy because of this garbage lease?
Right. So in the event that we have special circumstances like that, we definitely take those into consideration. And we can't hold a property owner liable for a situation where someone squatted in their property. And we definitely wouldn't hold that property owner liable for those services.
Gotcha. All right. I appreciate that.
But ultimately, if they have the cards and they're setting the cards out, we wouldn't stop the service. We would continue to service because garbage is a public health and safety issue.
True.
So we want to make sure that garbage is being taken away so that we don't have a situation where rodents and other things start to accumulate because garbage isn't being thrown away. But in the event that something like that happens, then the property owner can definitely contact us, and we'll work with the property owner to ensure that they're not held liable for a situation like that.
Okay. Good to know. Thank you. I appreciate that.
All right. Any other comments? Mr. Crutchfield, I want to say congratulations. I think this is the first hearing I've seen in the time I've been on council where we did not have any ratepayers down here saying, "You improperly levied my account, and I shouldn't be held responsible for this." So this is new. Congratulations.
Right. And we always try to take that into consideration as well. We try to work with those and catch those before we have to get here to this night.
I think you did a good job. So congratulations. Vice Mayor, a question or motion, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I move that we conduct a public hearing and adopt a resolution confirming and levying assessments against the properties listed in Attachment 1. B for unpaid garbage bills.
Thank you. Please vote on your screen.
Motion carries unanimously with Councilmember Brown absent.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to Action Item F. Madam Clerk, please announce that.
Receive All Home Regional Action Plan on Homelessness Presentation and Possibly Adopt a Resolution Generally Endorsing the Concepts.
Okay. Naveed, would you start the public sign-up clock on this one? And do we have a presentation from All Home?
Yes.
Oh, you're on, you're virtual. Okay. Fantastic. Go ahead. Introduce yourselves.
Hi. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Natalie Peterson interim assistant to the city manager. Before you this evening is a presentation from All Home on the regional action plan on homelessness. After the presentation, there is a recommendation before you to consider and possibly adopt a resolution generally endorsing the concepts of the regional action plan as a framework for reducing and preventing homelessness in the City of Vallejo. With that, I would like to hand the presentation over to Irving Torres and Ken Kirkie from All Home to go over the regional action plan. Thank you.
Great. Well, good evening, Mayor and members of the Vallejo City Council. My name is Irving Torres. I'm the Director of Community Engagement at All Home. And here with me is my colleague, Ken Kirkie. And we're going to be going over the presentation of the regional action plan. So if we can get the next slide. Great. So I'm just going to give a kind of an overview of what our organization is about. Our organization is a Bay Area organization that's advancing regional solutions that disrupt the cycles of poverty and homelessness, redress the disparities in outcomes as a result of race, and create more economic mobility opportunities for individuals and families with extremely low income within the Bay Area. You know, in what we share with many councils and elected officials across the Bay Area, in the point-in-time count 2019, there was close to almost a million residents who were under that category of extremely low income. So part of our work at All Home is really trying to connect the dots and really try to work across regions and sectors and silos by convening, co-creating, and coordinating kind of advanced solutions and innovative ideas across the region towards reducing homelessness, as well as supporting folks with extremely low income as well. And so, next slide. So our organization, when it was launched in 2019, you know, set out a goal of, you know, working with across different entities across the Bay Area. And so what ended up happening was they convened a group of stakeholders from all nine Bay Area counties that included policymakers, key affordable housing organizations, social equity organizations, economic mobility, folks with lived experience, and they called themselves the Regional Impact Council. And they kind of worked for the next 15 months on kind of figuring out and bringing kind of attention to two things. One is what can we do as a region to bring this urgency and tension of the issue of homelessness here in the Bay Area? And two, what concrete action steps, you know, we as a region can move forward with, with really trying to tackle this issue of homelessness across the Bay Area. So based upon this work by the Regional Impact Council, you know, they came up what was called the Regional Action Plan, which was a first-of-its-kind plan to tackle homelessness and housing insecurity by implementing a new approach to allocating housing resources and advocating for policy programs and funding. And so that report was produced of last year, April of last year. And so now, you know, since a year has passed by with this introduction of the regional action plan, we're kind of now moving on to this Phase II work of this regional action plan, which is really going around to the Bay Area, the different nine counties, making presentations like this about the regional action plan, but also this platform for change, which is really kind of identifying goals and solutions on what can we do to really try and change these systems to truly disrupt systemic like housing insecurities and improve economic and social mobility for individuals with extremely low income. Next slide. So within this regional action plan, kind of lays out a roadmap that would go towards reducing homelessness, where people experiencing homeless, unsheltered homelessness over the next three years. And so with this regional action plan states forth is this framework of implementing what's called the 124 Housing System Flow, which is a new integrative approach. And this 124 framework is basically kind of saying, I think it's going to be in the next slide, making simultaneous investments towards interim housing, permanent housing, and then kind of homelessness prevention programs and systems in place. And part of also this regional action plan is really kind of building and leading a coalition of individuals and groups and agencies across the region to advocate for policies and programs at the state and federal level to allocate more funding and policies for local municipalities to achieve this goal of the regional action plan. Next slide. So as I mentioned in this 124 framework, interim housing and permanent housing, homelessness prevention, and the 124 is a ratio. And this is basically a ratio from the regional level. Each of the county's ratios are going to be different. But basically, this ratio sets forth that for every investment of one unit of interim housing, there should be investment followed by investment of two units of permanent housing solutions, and then follow up by four investments towards homelessness prevention services and programs. And each of these different kind of categories are going to vary in terms of kind of what type of services. It wouldn't be kind of this one, like, specific, like, unit of interim housing. It would be a different set of kind of service or programs or kind of ideas within this interim housing, which could be, you know, safe parking RVs, you know, tiny homes, you know, other types of categories that would fall under that interim housing. Same goes for permanent housing, shallow subsidies, you know, permanent supportive housing. And then homelessness prevention is kind of this idea of like economic mobility programs and investments followed by other policies of innovative approach to really kind of support folks who are kind of categorized as the extremely low income, from avoiding them, you know, who are at most of becoming homeless, from preventing them from becoming homeless. You know, for example, Alameda County has information that states forth that for every person that they shelter in, two or more, three folks are on the street. And so part of the work of this regional action plan is really kind of figuring out what can we do to really kind of stop that flow of homelessness from happening and so forth. And that's going to become that category of homelessness prevention. Next slide. So as I mentioned before, these are just kind of the categories and different entities of the interim housing, permanent housing, and prevention. I'll just reiterate again, interim housing, navigation centers, tiny homes, managed RVs, and rapid resolutions, permanent housing, flexible subsidy pools, housing choice vouchers, permanent mobile home parks, and then prevention, financial assistance, tenant education, counseling, access to legal services, and then household support. Next slide. So I'm going to pass it on to my colleague, Ken, who's going to probably talk more about, kind of finish off the rest of the presentation, but also probably add on to anything that I missed. So Ken, take it away.
Thanks, Irving. Good evening, Mayor, council members, Vallejo staff, Ken Kirkie, Chief Partnership Officer with All Home. Thank you for having us here this evening. Yeah, just picking up on what Irving described, I think one of the main things that it's important to drive home is, you know, the Regional Impact Council met essentially beginning roughly right when COVID started bearing down on us all, in March of 2020, a steering committee of elected officials from around the region, leaders from a range of organizations, the business community, et cetera. And then, as Irving said, a technical committee of subject matter experts with deep experience in affordable housing, homelessness services, social equity, mental behavioral health, local public housing directors, and so on. And they worked really hard to come up with a regional action plan. And they did set forward what anybody in the Bay Area would think is a pretty audacious goal of a 75% reduction. But they did that because, you know, with the last point-in-time count, we had 35,000 people. And I was here for your meeting earlier and a lot of the discussion related to your proposed Home Key Project. Communities all over the Bay Area are facing the challenges that Vallejo is facing and Solano County is facing. And I think the Regional Impact Council members really wanted to go forward with a different approach, an approach that doesn't pit different solutions one against another, but really supports a set of concurrent investments to get people who are unhoused right now indoors as quickly as possible into interim housing, where they have services, where they, this is non-congregate shelter, where they have the dignity of a door that locks in a well-maintained facility, access to employment services, with the goal of transitioning toward whatever permanent housing solution is going to make sense for them. And for some people, that may be a housing voucher. What they really need is housing, and they may be rehoused pretty quickly. For other people, they need deeper services, and they're going to need some type of permanent supportive housing. But there are a range of different permanent housing solutions that can work. And then the other aspect, the other leg of the stool, so to speak, is homelessness prevention, to, as Irving said, to really stop the inflow of people into homelessness in the Bay Area, which has really ramped up, as you all know, dramatically in recent years. The cost of housing has just become more and more expensive. And the impact on people when they are on the streets, when they are living outdoors, when they don't know where they're going to sleep on a given night, is severe and can lead to all kinds of problems, and financial problems and emotional problems, what have you. And so part of what the regional action plan promotes and supports is a homelessness prevention program that really tries to meet people where they are. So in some cases, it is about eviction prevention for people who actually have a lease. They may be facing issues with a landlord. They may also be facing just a crisis that many of us face at different points in life, that they cannot pay the rent for a couple of months. And a couple of months of forbearance on assistance with being able to pay their rent can keep them housed and stop them from spiraling down into homelessness. For others, you know, there are a lot of people who, a point-in-time count, if they are actually counted, would be considered homeless, but they are not currently on the streets. They are living with, they may be living with a relative. They may be living with a friend. They may be couch surfing. They are at risk of homelessness based on all the data that's out there. People who are in that circumstance are more likely to become homeless. And sometimes there is problem solving and financial counseling and support for, in some cases, the person or people that they are living with that can help keep them housed. And then homelessness diversion is really meeting those who have recently become unhoused. We have a dynamic in the region now for years where the lack of, the lack of supply for good interim housing or permanent housing solutions has meant that there's a waiting line. And the more chronic one is, the greater one's eligibility is for what limited housing is available. Well, that obviously creates a problem because it really keeps people out in the streets and outdoors for a very long time, waiting for housing. Homelessness diversion is about really trying to meet people who are recently unhoused and get them services, get them into some type of interim housing solution, or in some cases, get cases, get them a housing choice voucher, so that they don't experience the long-term chronic impact of of being unhoused and of being homeless. Uh, next slide, please. So this is a look at the point in time count the last time around. It's my understanding that Solano's is 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 going to be released uh later, uh, a bit later this year, but this is from 2019, and it shows um essentially, if you look at the bar graph, a a dynamic that is pretty typical of most places in the Bay Area, most of the counties. Uh, we have a very large percentage of our homeless population in the Bay Area that is unsheltered. And uh, I believe as the city manager referenced this earlier, there simply are not places uh in the region for uh, this isn't just a Vallejo issue, for for people to be brought indoors. Um, and so that is one of the really challenging circumstances of 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 homelessness in in the Bay Area, including Solano County. Um, you can see here some of the point in time count uh statistics for for Vallejo as well and for the county. Um, generally speaking in the Bay Area, uh, the the unhoused population, the homeless population tends to be disproportionately African-American, Latino, and Indigenous. Um, and that is reflected in these statistics here to some extent. Uh, next slide, please. So this this is some modeling that we did uh for Solano County uh looking at this one-two-four ratio ratio of one interim shelter solution or one interim housing solution. They aren't actually uh traditional homeless shelters. Um, two permanent homeless solutions, and then four prevention interventions, and what it would look like across the county based upon the the point in time count uh from from 2019. As Irving said, the 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 dynamics of the unhoused population, the homeless populations around the region vary quite a bit, and this is truly illustrative. Uh, if if the city of Vallejo were to endorse the Regional Action Plan, we would really want to work with your staff, uh, work with the Solano County staff, which we're already starting to do, to really look at what the what the makeup of the population is and and what some of the the needs are likely to be as a result. Uh, next slide, please. Similarly, this shows that if if you if you were to follow the one-two-four framework, apply that in Solano County, kind of the breakdown of operating and and capital costs. One of the things that we hear over and over again um uh from Regional Impact Council members and our our partners is that there is a a tremendous need for operations and services dollars um in the region. There has been a pretty significant increase in the amount of capital dollars available uh for both interim uh housing as well as um some permanent housing solutions, which is terrific. Uh, but one of the things the Regional Impact Council is really advocating for now and in this coming year is to really increase the amount of operations and services dollars, so we can ensure that um Home Key Projects and other projects are really well-run uh going forward and that communities can can bank on them being well-run for for many years to come. Uh, next slide, please. So in working with communities like Vallejo or Solano County, um, we have uh we have a new uh Director of Implementation, Adrian Gonzalez, um, who is who is building out a small team uh and works in partnership with other members of the Regional Impact Council, other jurisdictions and nonprofits and so forth. What we would want to do is to assist you, and this is this is all pro bono, we're not a fee-for-service organization, um, with evaluating your existing resources, um, really trying to understand what the gaps are in terms of existing housing, um, the resources and and funding, how it's being utilized, and to really get a sense of based upon the need, and you'll have a new point in time count coming out soon, how how current funds might be utilized and and what additional funding is going to be needed. Um, I think it's fair to say that one of the things that the Regional Impact Council has been really um successful with is is advocating for additional resources, um, particularly in Sacramento, um, and has had uh quite an influence on the governor's office and the state budget around increasing funding for homelessness. Not that the Regional Impact Council is responsible for all those changes, but I think it's fair to say that the Bay Area delegation and and the governor have been listening to them. Um, and we would want to, in working with you, continue to do that, both in terms of Vallejo's relationship with the county and the county's resources, um, and how they're distributed relative to needs of the unhoused, but also advocating for additional resources that Vallejo, Solano County, and the Bay Area needs as we move forward in trying to implement the Regional Action Plan and really achieve this this very aggressive goal of of significantly reducing unchallenged homelessness in the region. Uh, next slide, please. So why a regional approach? Simply put, um, homelessness is a regional problem. Uh, we homelessness exists all over the Bay Area now, in communities where five, ten, fifteen years ago, um, visible uh homelessness really wasn't a thing in in many communities. It is now. It's a real challenge for communities. Um, many city councils um are struggling with with an issue of a magnitude that they have not had before, um, and really working to try to address it in a humane way. It's very complicated. You all know better than I do, the the neighborhood issues and so forth are complex, um, and the community issues are legitimate. Um, people want things to change, and they want things to be done well. And what we're finding is that learning from other jurisdictions, uh, working collaboratively across across the region is not only bringing more resources to the region uh and its communities, it's helping communities do problem solving on their own. Um, and Irving touched on this earlier about uh our mission is in part about addressing the region's current homelessness crisis, the thirty-five thousand plus people who are uh unhoused at this point in time. But it's also very much about dealing with the upstream issues of poverty and the lack of housing security and lack of economic and social mobility for people with extremely low incomes. Uh, there are nearly a million people out of eight million people in the Bay Area who fall into this category. It's it's roughly thirty-seven thousand a year uh region-wide for a household of three. Um, and about half the population is working. Um, many are seen, some are seniors, some are disabled, some are children, um, but it's a very large population, and it's it's fair to say that uh ten, fifteen years ago, most ELI households in the region weren't at risk of becoming homeless. Um, they might not live in the neighborhood that was most desirable. They might not have the most uh palacious uh dwelling that they were living in, but they were able to pay their bills. Um, but with the huge increase in housing costs in the region, um, with relatively flat wages at the at the lower end of the income spectrum, uh, particularly during the tech boom, a lot of folks became one paycheck away from uh becoming homeless. And that is why we we often say, and members of the Regional Impact Council, will say that, you know, the current crisis, if we don't get ahead of it, if we don't really address these issues and and bring people indoors and and stop the suffering on the streets, but also start to address some of the uh housing security issues, it, the current crisis is really the tip of the iceberg of what it could be. Uh, next slide, please. So uh touched on this already to a large extent. Um, the benefits of endorsing the Regional Action Plan are that you would be uh saying that your your staff could work with with the All Home Team uh in collaboration with Solano County staff uh to really understand what the needs of the city are, um, what some of the funding gaps are, um, to have access to resources, um, and to become part of this regional effort to really address not just unchallenged homelessness, but homelessness in general on a on a wide scale, and and to be part of uh the effort to achieve a dramatic reduction in unchallenged homelessness in the Bay Area, um, by implementing this concurrent investments in interim supportive housing, permanent housing solutions, and prevention. Uh, next slide, please. Here are some of the endorsements to date. Uh, you can see the the three counties in, I guess it's dark purple, uh, including Solano, uh, a number of other cities. Uh, we're also working closely with your neighbors to the north and in Napa, uh, with Marin as well. Uh, we're beginning to engage pretty extensively up in Sonoma, as well as down in Santa Clara, and we're working in Alameda County and the city of Oakland, as well as uh the city and county of San Francisco. Next slide, please. So those are our pictures. Um, so I guess it's time to see if we can answer any questions you may have.
Hey, thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, let me ask if we have any speakers from the public. We have one. Vice Mayor, call that person, please.
Yeah, I'd like to call on Jose Joey Carizales.
Jose, you'll have uh three minutes. Thank you.
I'm a little calmed down now after that first. Thank you. My parents, uh, thank you for that. Jose Joey Carizales, I just want to uh say that uh this is a program that offers change in this community, in the Solano County. We've had many organizations that have been here for twenty, thirty years and have done whatever they have done. Change is a good thing, and All Home is providing a a a programs, accessories, expertise, knowledge that is going to help my friends, definitely. Uh, my, as a board member of Housing for C O C, we certainly did uh listen to their program, and we certainly did uh approve uh what their concept is all about. Um, I just want to say that I hope that you you can understand that that what we want to do now for the future is allow great organizations who have the desire, the strength, the passion, the ability, who want to help my friends, come into our community, be an alternative, be a choice that has what already here. God bless those that have been here for twenty, thirty years. Now we have an organization that has uh is going to provide the leadership, the great expertise, the great knowledge, the great ability, and change is good. Change is awesome. And this is an opportunity for you to provide, to to give great change. What you will do, it is you will help one of my friends who's seventy years old, who's been out in the streets for a year. What you will do is help my friend who pushes her five-year-old daughter and her three-year-old daughter in his in the in the stroller, finding to her next location. What you will do is help middle-aged couple who sleep on a cardboard floor, has insulation between a cement and their bodies. That's who you will help. You will help those who are mentally disabled. You will help those, not only along with the Eden Center, but with the Broadway Project. They will be able to provide all those uh uh programs and abilities and professionalism uh that it takes. What, by accepting this program, by allowing them to be a part of Solano County and Vallejo, well, already Solano County, but in the city of Vallejo, by endorsing them, you will allow them to be able to help my friends who are unsheltered. I ask you to endorse their program. Thank you.
Thank you. We have no other in-person speakers. Nupi, do we have any virtual speakers?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have one speaker.
Okay, would you call the speaker, please?
Vallejo Together, go ahead, please.
Hello, Mayor and council members. Uh, my name is Dion Carter. I'm the Executive Director with Vallejo Together. Um, I've been there for now one year as of July first. Thank you Irving and Ken for a great presentation. Uh, Vallejo Together supports the All Home Regional Plans one-two-four model, and we're excited about how it would benefit our county. Um, we're a nonprofit, and our mission is twofold, to facilitate, to facilitate innovative direct service programs for people without homes or at risk for becoming homeless. So we're doing prevention and intervention, and we bring public, private, and nonprofit organizations together to determine and activate sustainable solutions. We believe this regional coordination is critical to our work, as other counties are experiencing this epidemic of homelessness, and we can learn and support each other. We embrace the All Home Regional Plan as one of those sustainable solutions. Uh, we believe that together we can, together we will. Uh, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. No, any other speakers? There are none. We'll close the speaking portion and to have have any comments or questions from council members. Yes, Council Member Laura A. Diaz.
Yes, I'd like to thank Ken and Irving for such a great presentation. Um, your presentation reinforced the decision that I just made when I voted for the the facility on on Broadway. I think that as we continue to address homelessness here in this city, um, your organization would be a welcome addition. Um, you have things laid out exactly how I have envisioned it, how I have practiced it when I worked at um at Contra Costa County. So I'm excited and um to see the possibility of bringing on board people that know what they're doing about homelessness, that that are going to help us develop a a plan and and a resource. Um, so I'm very excited, and I hope that my colleagues are just as excited as I am to um bring you guys on board. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Member Meester.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you so much for the presentation to Irving and Ken. So I met, I saw a similar presentation that uh Irving gave to our two-by-two, um, or we were invited to see that presentation. Um, so I was impressed, and I actually asked if you guys could come to the city um to request us to join. Um, and I do believe a, you know, I think the the biggest concern, um, because you probably heard tonight, if you were listening in, um, it's going to cost the city two hundred, one hundred and twenty-five million over the next five years to bring our streets up to a minimal level of, and the two hundred and sixteen million that you showed in your slide uh over five years for this, the homelessness, to address homelessness, Vallejo probably has about twenty-eight million of that based on our population. So these are huge numbers, and we cannot do it by ourselves. So I'm really grateful that that uh Vice Mayor Vitor Leeg and I are on the two-by-two, and the the council supports that, and now I hope that we'll support this as well, because we cannot do it by ourselves. This is a huge problem that's been brewing for years and years, and I don't, I read the, um, the New York Times has a columnist, his name is Jay Caspian Kang, and he writes about homelessness in the Bay Area, and he just, he posits the question, are the temporary, you know, the the tent encampments, the the tiny homes, are they the new slums of of the United States? And and there's no, right now, I mean, the the whole article was about, there's no place up. So people think it's temporary to be in a camp or a tent, and there's no place to move beyond that. And so we have to address this. And so I'm really excited that you guys came here, and I hope that the council supports you. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Council Member Ariela.
Thank you, Mayor. Finally, something I can wrap my head around. This makes the most sense to me at all, and I am am all for this program. I I am, how do you address a scarce housing? That was in one of your um earlier slides. Um, the one-two-four, whatever, and one of them was addressing scarce housing. How did, what, how how do you do that?
I mean, I could, I can try to jump in there, Council Member.
I don't know what it means, yeah.
So part of, you know, we have, there's the larger systemic issue, right? We've so underbuilt housing in the Bay Area for such a long time that it costs a fortune, and it impacts people at the low end of the income spectrum the most. So we have that big problem. But in terms of the unhoused population, the reason that interim supportive housing is a big part of this is because it takes time to build permanent supportive housing. When you've got thirty-five thousand people suffering on your streets, you can't have that, is right? It's not a good, it's not a good thing. Those people are deteriorating, and uh it's it's bad for them, it's bad for their communities, it's it's bad for everyone around them. And so a lot of what the Regional Action Plan put forward, puts forward is a different approach to shelter, not traditional shelters, not congregate shelters, not, I might be here tonight, I don't know if I can get in tomorrow night, I don't know where I'm going, but a place with services, um, support, a door that locks, well-maintained, and it's set up to transition people to permanent housing. So up to transition people to permanent housing, so we can move a lot of people who are outdoors right now into something that is truly a positive transition toward a home.
Now, I understand that, yeah, thank you. I understand the concept, I'm sorry to cut you off, I understand the concept, it's just that stood out to me, this scarce housing, and I know technically what that means, there is no housing, but it was, it stood out to me that you would address the scarce housing, and somehow that meant something different to me. But if that, you know what I mean, the scarce part, because we know we don't have any. So I didn't know if that addressed, well, we're actually going to go out and build this type of housing for this type of transition, or this type of population, then we're going to go in and build and create a different type of environment for another population that it doesn't fit in that first scenario, and then on to the third one. That's, that's how I'm breaking it down in my feeble brain, if you will, so. No, it's terrific. You know, actually, I met with Judge Dan Healy here in Vallejo on Wednesday. He's a criminal court, and he wants to decriminalize, you know, part of his thing is to decriminalize homelessness and to create a safe haven for them, where they can get their services while they're on probation for their various, you know, offenses. And actually, Dion Carter with the Vallejo Together, and La Clinica, one of our clinics here in Vallejo, are a big supporter of this safe haven, which has resources and a safe space for them. So maybe this along the pipeline will be a full-circle collaboration with your All Home California. So I'm very supportive of this. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Vera Leeg.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Thank you, Irving, and thank you, Ken. I'm glad that you finally had the opportunity to present to the City Council your program, because I know we've tried to put it on the agenda early this year, I think maybe even last year, so thank you for the presentation. I am in full support of your program. I appreciate, and actually, your program is evidence-based, as we call it in research. The multi-pronged approach, collaborative partnerships with, with the county and other agencies is, you know, very successful. You can also leverage resources with other providers, mental health, primary care, substance use services, because those are key to helping lift up folks that are, have these conditions, mental health issues and substance use issues. And as well as, you know, you partner with agencies that provide rehabilitation services and job training and all those things, to make sure that homeless folks, once they are sheltered, meaning that the family, the, the home, what was that term again? Making sure that they are in stable rooms or homes is key for them to seek treatment and seek services. Scars, you know, scars, there is a scarcity of homes and rooms and apartments. And one of the things that this county, I mean, that the city has done is approved the A D U auxiliary dwelling units many years ago. It was actually, it's actually a state law, so that would allow folks to build, you know, one-bedroom, two-bedroom homes in their backyards, and they could rent it, or not just to family members, but be able to rent it out to individuals who may have, may need, you know, housing. And then the folks, and we already are in the, doing the right thing by building permanent supportive housing with Eden Housing and now the Broadway Project. That will address the scarcity and low inventory of rentals and housing in our community. Tiny homes also have been put out there as a solution to address, you know, scarcity of, and lack of affordable housing. That's going to be a discussion in the future. And there's also actually a pending proposal at the state level to ask folks that live alone in their homes, or maybe it's a couple that have now, all their kids are grown, and they have extra rooms in their homes. There is a plan to actually get an inventory of folks that may be able to rent out a room in their homes. So that's actually happening in some parts of the country. So that's actually legislation that's being, I heard that it's being proposed at the state level. And actually, that's a veteran's proposal. A veteran had actually proposed that idea, and it's gaining traction. So that's one way to at least help with veterans who may just need a room to rent, and folks that may want to earn some income could provide that accommodation to veterans that need shelter. So there's many options, and I'm glad that you have presented this program to us, and I'm going to support your program. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Just out of curiosity, going forward, how does this play out with working with the city of Vallejo, and what kind of a timeline are you looking at doing here?
Having trouble unmuting there for a second. So essentially, Irving and I will tell our colleague, Adrian Gonzalez, Director of Implementation, tomorrow morning, if, if this moves forward, that it did, and he and his new staff member will be reaching out and really trying to work with your staff and with Solano County. We have actually a staff meeting coming up with Ann Putney from Solano County, who has worked, I know, in Vallejo, and we'll just try to start moving the ball forward. And, you know, there was mention of the Two-by-Two Committee, and we're working to support and be in tandem with what the committee is coming up with, so we're looking forward to it, and I think it will happen quite quickly.
And do you see much staff demand on the staff of the city of Vallejo?
As I understand it, so the model that we are now using has been simplified a bit to reduce the amount of staff input that's needed locally. There is, there is some staff input that will be needed. A lot of what is needed can come through the county, I think. Obviously, we'll try to, you know, limit, limit the impact on the staff as much as, as much as we can. We know the staff resources are, are, you know, stretched in many cases already, so we try to make it as easy as possible.
Okay, well, it all sounds very promising, so we wish you luck. Unless there is further questions, is there a motion, Vice Mayor?
Yes, just wanted to add a comment. Mr. Mayor, the Capsolano, as you know, is being restructured. There is a meeting happening tomorrow evening, so if you have time, you may want to attend that meeting. It's at, it's going to be in Fairfield. So again, I am pleased to offer that we receive a presentation by All Home California, a collective impact partnership on the Regional Action Plan on Homelessness, and number two, consider and possibly adopt a resolution generally endorsing the concepts of Regional Action Plan as a framework for reducing and preventing homelessness in the city of Vallejo.
Motion carries unanimously with Councilmember Brown on the opposite.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to our next item, please.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. You're quite welcome, and thank you for staying up till late. Madam Quik, would you call item G, 9G, and Naveed, would you start the time clock on that one?
Adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a three-year consultant and professional services agreement with Admiral Security Services to provide unarmed security services for city facilities and parking lots.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. Jason Ackley, I'm administrative analyst here on behalf of Public Works today. I've got, to my right.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Madam Vice Mayor and council members. I am Teresa Larkin, representing Admiral Security Services.
Thank you. We're here tonight bringing forward a motion to approve a contract extended to Admiral Security Services to provide security services in the city as of next fiscal year, which will begin at the end of this month. We have a short presentation loaded up.
I wanted to introduce to you Admiral Security Services, who have been in the Bay Area for 18 years, and they are a regional security company, not a national or international brand. And it's that regional approach that we bring to the city, and we have a little bit of a slideshow to let you see us in action, if we can. Next slide, and hit play.
The assets you have today dictate your tomorrow. Securing those assets is your future. That's why you need professionals that can evolve and adapt to your needs. Admiral Security Services specializes in physical security in a high-tech and ever-changing world. With over a decade of experience, Admiral Security Services is adaptable, efficient, and equipped to protect your assets with the highest degree of excellence. We train for a variety of scenarios, emphasizing de-escalation and control. Our goal is to minimize loss and maximize safety. Our team conducts full risk assessments, identifies synergies, and aligns with your mission to provide the best cost-driven security solution. Don't leave your future at the hands of chance. Admiral will secure your most important assets today, so you can focus on tomorrow.
We're really proud to be here, and thank you for enduring the commercial. But one of the things that's important about us is that we know you. So Admiral Security Services actually has onboard people that have been on-site at the city of Vallejo for many years. I was actually on the transition team many years ago in 2018, when the contract was given to a regional firm that eventually was bought out. It is that regional approach that I come back to with Admiral and proud to be with them, because that's what I advocate for the city.
Excuse me just one second. Can you speak closer to the mic? We can barely hear you.
I sure can, I'm sorry. It's late. Let's get through this. So we've been in business for 18 years. We're regional. We believe in your city. You will not be just another account. You will be a priority. And one of the things that I really love about Admiral is that, you know, listening to your community's concerns and your advocacy of homeless equity is something that we train on. These are people, we get it. And although we have to have everyone adhere to ordinances, we can do that humanely and with dignity, and Admiral really, really trains on that well, and that's a real pride point for me as a representative of their firm. So we're going to also do more for the community by making sure that we hire locally, and that we give opportunities for people, and maybe some people in these marginalized areas, to get training, to get a job. It's not great pay, but it's not bad pay, but it's nice and secure pay, and it's a way up, and so we're very proud to provide that to you. We're going to listen to you, we're going to listen to your pain points, we're going to train to them and drill to them, and give you the service I think that, that you deserve and your constituents deserve as well. So I'm going to cut this really short to say we're really happy to be here, we're very excited to partner with you, and we'd like to be your partner and have a two-way conversation. So Admiral Security, give us a chance.
Anything further?
Nope, that, that is our presentation. We're available for questions, if you have any.
Thank you very much. We'll ask if there are any speakers in the room? There are no personal speakers. Do we have any virtual speakers, Naveed?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have one speaker.
Okay, would you call that person, please?
Chris, go ahead, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Chris.
This is virtually the most ludicrous presentation I've ever heard. You're going to authorize $3.7 million over a three-year contract to provide security in the downtown that isn't being provided by the Vallejo Police Officers, because we have to supplement this. And the reason I know this is because I sit on the Board of C C R C., and we spend $140,000 to supplement the security in the downtown, because the V P O. can't do it. So to listen to this woman just project that she's so intimately involved with the goings-on in the downtown, I'm sorry, I just have to take offense with that. Does she know who Crazy Red is? Does she know any of the dynamics of the downtown? Does she know that there are four private security firms, you know, V P... This is just absurd to me, that they, they, C C R C. pays $140,000. They pay another $140,000 for another security firm just to protect Planned Parenthood. La Clinica pays another $40,000 just to do that. Can't we consolidate these all? Can't we get the Vallejo Police Department to do all the things that we require them to do? This, you're, you're being completely, oh my God. This is such a snow job. Good luck with that. Approve 3.7. It's more than the proprietary or the participatory budgeting is spending a year? Oh my God. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Plaizer. Do we have any further speakers? Okay. Mr. Plaizer raised some interesting questions. Was there any response either by the applicant or by staff? Yes, Mr. Malone.
Well, I think the first thing I'd like to point out is that this contract is not to supplement the police department. We are not able to hire people to supplement and do the work that our police department does. This is a contract that we normally put out to bid to provide security services for city facilities only. These other contracts that Mr. Plaizer mentioned, we're assuming that either a private organization or private business went out and solicited for additional security services, and they selected a firm of their own choosing. So this is completely different from the way it was described by Mr. Plaizer, and this is a contract that's been ongoing for these services in the city, probably before I started.
Okay, thank you. Any further comment from staff or the applicant?
Yeah, this is actually, it's a replacement contract for one that literally just is running out at the end of this year, so we've had these services for a few years with a couple different firms. If we can get, I can reach out to Mr. Plaizer, because if we can get contact info from those other vendors that provide security, it would be good to loop in Admiral as we move forward, so we're all working off the same page, more or less.
Okay, well, this is the equivalent of about four officers, police officers a year. So what do we get for this money?
I believe we have seven or eight different patrols that are covered by this money. Fleming Hill Water Treatment Plant, there's two officers at City Hall, we have the security that covers this council meeting, and our other meetings are included. The parking lots in the parking program are covered, including the parking garage. There's a new member going in over at Housing across the street from here at the Housing Authority. 400 Mary Island's got a guard in it as well that would be covering that campus and kind of helps us out here at. at City Hall. It's a handful of individuals. Usually, it's more than one person covering a shift. You know, if we have a 24-hour shift going on at somewhere, it'll be two or three people overlapping.
So there'll be people out there 24 hours a day?
In some of the locations, yes.
And one of the biggest complaints that my office has received is the lack of protection in the parking lots with respect to break-ins of cars, both in the garage and in the service lots, and the theft of catalytic converters. Is there any proposal this applicant is going to make to address those concerns?
Absolutely. In fact, part of the contract asks us to take a look at the risks that we see as we go forward with the contract. And that's one of the things we will do. When we see something that we think we can recommend, we will do that. And what we will do too is, you know, there is a budget. We can move those dollars around, depending on what you need and what we see, and make some creative ideas to put the money to its best use.
Are we keeping track of the number of break-ins to automobiles in the lots and in the garage at this time?
We get reports from our current security provider that can be totaled up, so that we can get that. There has definitely been an increase Bay Area-wide in those types of issues.
So what provisions exist to review the statistics of our present situation compared to this applicant after a period of six or 12 months, to see if there's any improvement? Or maybe it's gotten worse?
That can definitely be done. I mean, I plan on... Data sharing and data analysis are definitely something we looked at when we did the RFP. We wanted to be able to get those kind of reports out of a new vendor and take a look at them. And like was mentioned, you know, as we move along, we can make incremental changes to kind of improve things or shift people around to get better coverage. And it's tough, because the criminals have more time to come up with ideas on how to thwart security than security's working. The police department would probably stay similar. But that's on the docket to sit down with Admiral as time goes on and do reviews quarterly.
Mr. Platzer mentioned a particular individual who's well-known here for tearing into garbage cans and leaving everything on the surface. The garbage cans are city-owned property. Will this applicant prevent that from occurring?
I would assume we'd try.
Yep. You know, we can't prevent.
I don't want "try." I want "done."
I got it. I got it. We deter, and we'll work with that person. And we'll continue to work with that person.
Okay. And you indicate you're going to be working with a dispatch center. Does that mean the Vallejo Police Department Dispatch?
That's our own dispatch center. So we have our own 24/7 dispatch center, and then we also work with police. And one of the things we also do is we share information with police as a regular occurrence, as our process. And we talked about the quarterly service reviews. What we do there is we take the police department's crime mapping, take our statistics, make a report overlay, and we'll figure out what's really going on. Is what we are doing effective? If not, what do we do to make it effective? And then that's how we build this security partnership, is to actually look at the data. So the plan is to work hand-in-hand with the police with data sharing and figure out what we can do to help.
Okay. So if somebody has a problem, say, on a parking lot, they're going to call 911. How do you get involved?
We get a call from our dispatch center if they call us.
Yeah, but how do you get involved with them when the normal person's going to call 911, not a private dispatch number?
Well, if we are apprised of it, we can be there to be eyes and ears. Part of security is we observe and report. So if we're there, we're going to observe and we'll report. We can tell PD or whoever we have, this is what we have, we need backup, let's keep our eyes open. Our vehicles are fitted with cameras that go forward and back-facing. And so we can click those on. They're clicked on during traffic events, but we can also click them on if there is an event that we need to manually see. So we have several different means of getting information to the police and to our dispatch center.
When does the present contract expire?
The end of this month it expires.
End of what?
The end of this month.
Okay. And do we presently use armed security guards?
No, we do not.
Will there be armed security guards under this contract?
That was not part of this contract, no. It's an option we can look into, but that was not in their RFP. We just did.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Councilmember Laura Diaz.
Yes, I'd like to thank you for your presentation. I like short and direct presentations. And I think, you know, any of us that know what security guards do, it's self-explanatory. You know, they're there to protect. They don't have the same power that a police officer does. You guys are being brought on to protect city property. You know, it's on the staff report. So I'm thinking 911 calls would go to 911 dispatch, which would in turn go to the police department, not so much to your department, because as it says here, you're going to be covering parking garage, you know, in the downtown area, you know, a couple of housing authority buildings. So you're specifically being hired to patrol certain areas to protect the city. So one of the things that I really liked that you mentioned is that you're going to hire local. I think that that's important. And I would ask that you really try to hire most of your folks locally, because the city needs it. We have a lot of people here wanting and willing to work. So if that's something that you can do, that's fantastic. You know, make it a priority. And then the fact that you have a human approach to dealing with our unhoused population, that's important, too. We've been hearing about that all night today. You know, we have tons of people living on the street. We don't want people coming in that are going to hurt them, degrade them, anything of that nature. So when you mentioned that, you know, that was important to me. As far as the regulars out on the streets, you know, we see them, we know them. You don't, but you guys will get to know them, you know, and that comes with the game. You know, once you're out there, you'll start to know who's doing what. And again, you know, thank you for the presentation. I think that we need all the help that we can get. We don't have the money to put police officers out there. A lot of the community has been voicing their concerns and wants security guards options. You know, we have folks calling in all the time saying you can, you know, hire, you know, X amount of security guards with what you can hire one police officer. Well, this is the opportunity. This is exactly what people have been screaming and yelling about. You know, so I think this is a good thing. We already have it in place. We're just changing vendors, is my understanding, correct? So it's not like we're bringing something in that's not already been here. It's already been here. We're just extending it. And with what you mentioned, it sounds like you're going to go a little bit above and beyond what we've already been receiving. So thank you for that.
Councilmember Ariel.
Great. Thank you, ma'am. I'm going to ask staff, did this go through an RFP process?
Yeah, we did an RFP process earlier this year.
And this was the only... This was the best bid that we got?
We received 16 responses, and we narrowed that down through a really vigorous process to get down to here.
Good to know. Good to know. City properties. The municipal marina is city property, and I am the council liaison to that board there. And we have lack of cameras out there. And, you know, cameras are supposed to help supplement the police department, you know, in being the eyes and ears out there. Will the marina be part of this patrol, security patrol?
The marina is actually under this contract. That is correct. Sorry, I left it off the list before. The marina is there. And we do have some cameras out there. I think we were talking about some of our security cameras around town and working on them. But yeah, the marina's included.
It is included. Okay, great. That's all I needed to know. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Verdega.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I was going to ask, I know a few years ago there were issues and complaints from folks that parked their cars in the garage. And since you're responsible for that, have you had any data on increase or decrease of break-ins? So you don't have to provide that to me now if you don't have it, just the issue, because it was raised by some folks that whose cars always get burglarized. So if you could just take a look at that. And then outcome measures, increase. And I know that security guards do deter, you know, crime. That's a proven fact, based on research, as we know. And actually, your folks, the security folks that are here at this building, are... I know they're from Vallejo, because they live in Vallejo. They tell me, because I ask them, "Oh, hello, how are you?" They're very friendly, but they're also... They know what to do with... They know their jobs. So when I come in here, I don't have a badge usually. They ask me to sign in, you know, regardless of who I am. And so they follow the protocol for everyone, whoever you are. Of course, they know the mayor, but I'm not always here all the time. But I really commend them for that, because they do their job well. And Danilo is the security guard that I usually see here, and I just want to commend him, because he's one of the real good ones, very good with the public, but also strict. He enforces the rules. So thank you. Again, I will support the contract, the renewal of this contract. Thank you.
And we hear you, Vice Mayor.
Does someone else have a comment? Hi. Oh, thank you, Mayor. Sorry, I thought somebody else was commenting. So congratulations. It says in the staff report that there were 16 other applicants, or 16 total, and you rose to the top, so congratulations. This is definitely a cost-saving measure for the city, although even security guards don't have police powers to arrest. But as Vice Mayor Verdega said, they do have the presence, just a presence, and the safety factor that they can be the eyes on the street for us. And protecting our property is very important, especially our water resources, because they are incredibly valuable. So congratulations again, and I intend on supporting this. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments from council members? Just one more question. We have a lot of cameras all over the place. Sometimes people look at what they depict, and sometimes they don't. Will your organization be looking at any of those cameras?
If the city allows us to take a look at them, yes, absolutely.
Okay.
That's going to be part of that collaboration that we're going to establish with the police department to do that. And we've done that in other municipalities.
Okay. And after, say, six months to a year on the job, will you be preparing a review report with recommended improvements or changes for us to look at?
Absolutely. That is part of what we do.
Okay. Thank you very much. So there's nothing further, Vice Mayor?
One last question. You said you have your own 24/7 dispatch. Who has access to that phone number? Do we... Does the city have access to it?
Everybody. Yes, it will have... Yes, the city will have access to it.
City meaning city staff?
City staff. There's usually public postings, so even the public can see to get that number as well.
That would be good. Maybe we can add that to the city website? Is that okay, to add that to the city website? Okay. It's always good. Okay, thank you. Yes, Mr. Mayor, I offer that we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement for citywide unarmed security services with Admiral Security Services, Inc., in the amount of $3,750,000 for the term of July 1st, 2022, through June 30, 2025, with two one-year options to extend.
Please vote on your screen.
Ms. Carey is unanimous with Councilmember Brown. I'm saying...
All right. So that concludes that. Thank you so very much, and welcome to the community.
Thank you so much.
Okay. We'll move on to item number 10, information, calendars. Are there any from anybody? Nope. 11, city managers' report. Mr. Malone.
Thank you, Mayor. I only have one item. Recently, we issued a contract for a firm to work on potholes. That firm actually started this week. It's a pilot program that we hope will be successful. And if they are successful, we plan on extending the contract for additional work.
I think there's plenty of work to be done. Thank you. 12, city attorneys' report. Ms. Neves.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Just wanted to inform the council that we are currently working on some new initiatives and strategies to bring forward to council some ideas on property cleanups, abandoned, inoperative, unlicensed, and illegally parked vehicle abatements, and some code enforcement strategies that we have been working on, and we'll be vetting with the city manager's office and then bringing forward some ideas to the council.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to our community forum. Navid, would you start our two-minute clock running? And now is the second half of the community forum. Anybody who didn't speak at the first community forum may do so here, but they may not do so again if they spoke at the first community forum. You may address any item that is not otherwise on the agenda. And with that, we will move on, in part, to reporter presiding officers. While the time clock is running, is there anyone who makes on council who wishes to present a report at this time? Councilmember Do.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to report that the North Bay Division of the League of California Cities is going to be hosting their next meeting in Petaluma on August 4th. And it is all about homelessness and solutions for homeless. So the speaker is actually going to be Jason Elliott, the senior counselor to Governor Gavin Newsom. And he will be talking about the Care Clinic, which is a proposed framework to deliver mental health and substance use disorder services to the most severely impaired Californians who too often languish suffering in homelessness or incarceration without the treatment they desperately need. So I am very excited to have that being presented to all of us. And also, I just wanted to say that it is Director Tigbaugh's birthday today. And she is here so late with us, I really feel like we should sing "Happy Birthday." Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Melissa. Happy birthday to you.
Okay, we're all hired. All right. So coming back to community forum, do we have any speakers in person? There we do.
I think that's... Mr. Moore Monroe, I'm sorry. Dwight Monroe Jr.
Mr. Moore, you have three minutes.
Thank you, council and mayor, and city staff. I've heard a lot about the homelessness tonight, and it's all great. I'm glad everything went through. The city council approved everything they needed to approve tonight, and we're moving forward with the various projects. However, it's been brought to my attention that the children have been left out of several months of discussion at city council. I haven't heard any or very minimal discussion regarding GRVD, GVRD, different entities in Vallejo that provide resources or opportunities for kids to actually enjoy the summer. Right now, the heat is coming on strong, and had a post just thinking out loud on Friday, and actually, one of the council members actually spoke on it briefly. But what I posted is, "Vallejo, we need access to public pools, rec centers, sports facilities. On days like this," which was Friday, "the kids just got... just finished out of school, and they got nothing to do but sit in this heat." Actually, just a testament to that, I run a brake business. I do a mobile brake service. And I helped out a young woman today, and she's like a block from Star Street or Star Avenue. And she had six children in his home. And all of these kids were just sitting on their phones. They're just sitting on their devices. And yeah, we've all heard it all the years, you know? Kids are getting lazy. They're on their phones. They're doing this. But we got to create these opportunities. And I'd like to actually applaud Ms. Laura Diaz, because she actually hopped on that Facebook post with the community pretty much just calling anybody out, and actually just reflected on the funds that she used, the $50,000. So what I asked in that post was if any other council members could actually be transparent enough to... And I heard that it's posted on the website and everything like that. But as a public servant, it's actually your obligation to inform us of these things. We deal with a lot of secret meetings in Vallejo, so you got to know this person or know that person on Facebook to be in touch with whatever you need to be in touch with. But you guys got to reach out to everybody. You're doing a great job at it, but do a little bit more, if I could ask of that respectfully. But the thing is, we got to get these kids on our focus. I haven't heard anything coming from city council, other than this soccer program that she spent $17,000 on. But I need to know, and the community needs to know, what the rest of the council members... rest of the council members are putting their money to, especially when it comes to the youth. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any further speakers virtually?
We do not.
Okay, do we have any in person, or we have none? So we'll return to reports by presiding officers and members. Councilmember Laura Diaz.
Yes, I'd like to first address the speaker. I mean, we have the summer program, that, the soccer program, but also, we have a summer academy for student success that's going to be starting on July 8th through August 8th. We're expecting about 120 children, and what we do there is we work with the kids, tutoring them during the summer. We also have partnered with the Lawrence Hall of Science, so they get a STEM component. This year, we're adding art and music components, so that's going to be happening Monday, Wednesday, and Friday from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. We don't have the location yet, so as soon as that becomes available, I'll be posting it. Each child receives a backpack full of school supplies. We have the parents learn how to navigate through the educational system. We do one-on-one tutoring with these kids, and the tutors are actually students that have grown up in Vallejo and have gone to universities and come back for the summer. We've had them in the past from UCLA, UC Berkeley, Davis, Solano Community College. So these are Vallejo-grown kids helping other children. And then we have graduation, where we have the superintendent of the school district that attends, and some of the school board members. Board member Kristy Gardner, she's been faithful to us for the past three years, she always attends. So that's another thing that we're working on. This is put together with Project Blessing Bags, Project Blessing Bags, and the Eric Reyes Foundation, and the SNUera Centro Latino. So I'd be more than happy to look around and see what's available, and maybe you and I can connect, because there are some other things, maybe not advertised as much as they should, but I'm with you, I'm with you 100%. I mean, I have a grandson that's seven, and I don't want him at home on a tablet, so we'll work on that. My report briefly is that I attended the PLTI graduation, and help me, Councilmember Do who attended with me, that's Parent Learning Leadership graduation. It was amazing to see the people there that went through this program via Zoom, yet were able to build a family setting. They each had a project to make their cities better, and they explained what their project was, their kids were so proud of them as they went up and got their certificate. I mean, I just loved it, and I think that there should be more programs like that, and I encourage the rest of the council members and anybody out there to either participate or attend these graduations. It was amazing, it was really, really heartfelt, and that's the only way that we're going to change our city, you know, by, you know, empowering people, you know, those that have a voice inside of them, but for whatever reason haven't been able to utilize it. You know, these folks mentioned how this program has made them want to participate civically and in their children's education. So it starts at home, you know, we want to make Vallejo better, besides economic development and everything else that's always mentioned, which is key, and that's why we're here, you know, to make those decisions. Until we start working and focusing with our children and our families, a lot's not going to change. So I was very happy to go there and have Councilmember Do be present with me. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Verdelega.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also wanted to respond to Mr. Monroe about, you know, what are we doing for kids during the summer, and I, in fact, part of my, it's not a big amount, but I'm allocating $3,000 of my discretionary money to GVRD this summer, and I would like to encourage my fellow council members that if you have not allocated your whole $50,000 yet, to consider donating or giving it to GVRD, because they have a lot of youth that may make good use of it. So I, you know, like I, Mr. Monroe, I'm giving $3,000 to GVRD for the summer for kids, and I told them that please give out scholarships to, you know, our low moderate income families and kids, and they said they will do that. So again, yes, you know, we'll do what we can on our end to help our kids and our youth. In fact, just last Saturday, I don't know if you heard it on social media, the Filipino Community Philippine Cultural Committee used part of its money that I'm allocating to them from my discretionary money for the Philippine Cultural Committee, Pistasanayon, they actually held a very successful skateboard competition at Wardlaw Skate Park. There were a couple of hundred kids there, kids from little kids to adults, and it was very successful, very well managed by youth themselves, young adults, and actually, two of the kids were, you know, middle school kids, who actually thought of the idea, and we, as the adults in the Philam community, supported it, and it happened, and it was a big success. And I will ask them to do it again this summer, and I will make that special request, because there's monies there that I'm donating to them to, for youth programs, not just for Filipino kids, but for all youth in Vallejo who want to participate. So skateboarding is such a big deal for a lot of kids, even girls do it, I'm just quite impressed. I wish I could do that, but I'm too old for that, but, so it was a fun, fun event, and very, it's just very positive, I was so pleased. And I would like to invite the council and the community to the Philippine Cultural Committee, Pistasanayon Cultural Festival on Saturday, June 18. It's a free festival, starting at 10 o'clock, it's at the Mare Island Coal Sheds. And I want to thank all our sponsors, Southern Land, Cereja Vallejo, Kaiser Permanente, MCE, V-Town Farms, you know, Filipino community is one of the recipients of their community giving program. So again, it's a free festival, open to all June 18. I know Juneteenth is happening, but their program starts at 11, the Pistasanayon starts at 10, so you are all invited to attend both opening ceremonies. So 10 a.m. Coal Sheds, 11 a.m. Juneteenth at the MLK Park. And it's an all-day celebration. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Do.
Thank you, mayor, and thank you, Mr. Monroe, for your concern. I didn't see that Facebook page, I, you know, sometimes, it's so sort of passive, you know, the scrolling, scrolling, and if we see what you see, so I apologize. But anyway, you know, one of the things that we just talked about tonight, so the city of Vallejo has approved a youth coordinator, so the council has supported that, I think, unanimously, and so that's really great. And that's, I think that's really can have an impact, whereas, you know, some of these little, they're not small to some people, but from, you know, from a budget's perspective in the city of Vallejo, the amounts that we allocate, it's just not a lot of money, but we try where we can. And I supported, I haven't quite figured out who I'm supporting this year, but last year I did the Center for the Arts, which they have this kids' summer art camp, and the Meyer Theater, because they host, Jacqueline Yvonne does kids in films, she does a kids' in film work, festival, actually, and she's fantastic. And Dr. Rhonda Renfro, Club Stride, it's not necessarily fun, it's more civic engagement, but for people who like politics, it could be fun. So those are the things. I appreciate your concern, I do. And as far as we're pointing out, so I'm the liaison in the McCune Room, and they're really, it's quite an interesting place now, so Wayne Goodman has brought a piano in there, he's a fantastic piano player. So if you're during, if you're there during the art, if you're downtown during the art walk, check out the McCune Room and watch him tinkle the keys. And they're going to have a presence at the farmer's market once a month to sort of try and get people to see, get interested in their collection, to come and visit. And what else have I done? Can't remember, it's been a while. Well, tomorrow night, we have the regional two-by-two, we'll be looking at the MOU or the JPA. And, yeah, there's also, there's quite a few things going on this weekend, and there's also the Pride Picnic in Alden Park, which is on Sunday. So with that, I am done, thanks.
Okay. Vice Mayor Verdelega.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I forgot, the art walk, I saw Councilmember Meester there, it was, you know, again, to start the summer, the art walk is every second Friday of the month, so that's going to be an ongoing thing, so please support downtown Vallejo. And then the Surveillance Advisory Board meeting, we had our second meeting last week, and thanks to Navid, that board is still trying to elect its chairperson, and it's been a tie three and three, and they haven't had all seven members present. So I'm hoping that at their next board meeting, that all seven members will be present. And they have a lot of work to do, and they're all very, you know, active and very motivated and passionate about the work that's going to be, that they'll have to do. And Police Chief Williams was also in that meeting, and Captain, I forgot, the deputy, Deputy Chief Ta, yes, was in that meeting. So again, thanks to VPD and the SAB Board for all the work that they do. It's all volunteer work, but it's a lot of work, but thank you. Thank you to the volunteers and our commissions. That's it, thank you.
Okay, anyone, any further? Just a quick update on the toll for State Route 37. The tolling legislation is still not quite through the legislature, but if it's passed, it would provide tolling effective for 2026. However, they have said that they will not begin charging until actually the interim project is completed. There's still a debate going on whether to do an interim project, which would be an improvement of the present highway, pending completion of the ultimate project, which is the raised causeway. But there, it does look like there's a toll coming. The median, the means test is still yet to be ascertained, and they're hoping that maybe as many as 50% of the populace of Vallejo may not have to pay tolls, or will be able to pay a reduced toll. That's still a dispute to be resolved. So that's moving forward. Unless there's anything further, we're adjourned at 10:49 this evening. Thank you so much.